Orange County Commissioners Court Meeting, October 14th. I'm going to look down and make sure I've got this right. I hope my voice will hold up a little better today than it did Saturday. I was at the Baylor TCU game. And I've never yelled so loud, or had worse hearts palpating. That game was all swallowed into a very morning. We have a, uh, Ferris and Jenna here this morning. We'll try to get through it as quickly and reasonably as possible. And we'll start as usual with our opening prayer. For me, let me call the roll. Mr. Gwister Yarre.
Here.
Commissioner Rizos.
Here.
And Ripper Dog around here. Commissioner Duke.
Here, sir.
Commissioner Shannon. Father, we ask you to do us today and to be good citizens of Orange County. Help us to do things we need to do, to be good to each other during this meeting, and to listen to all viewpoints. To thank you for this beautiful weather that set in. And we hope to get a lot more rain out of it. And we certainly appreciate your relief and lead. And I thank for all the things that you give to us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm the, uh, Jenna this morning. The first thing we have is item number seven. Discuss approved, disapproved receipt and opening of bids and award of 2014 Orange County Seal Coat Program project authored by Mike Wozniak and David Underbrand. Wozniak.
What I would like to do is save that for the end. Save it for the end of the, after my other two.
Okay.
I'll do eight, nine.
Let's go to eight.
Besides the bid opens, I can go outside.
All right, eight, discuss approved, disapproved 2013-14 Seal Coat, fancy chip seal, fancy program paid from 2014-15 budget and using road and bridge special account. Estimated cost $720,000 authored by Michael Wozniak. Okay? That one first.
Yes, yes.
All right.
Now, what it is, is last year we were getting everything set up to do a seal coat. Uh, and there's the contracts in front of you and the roads we had set up. Problem is, is we overran this fiscal year. And we're opening the bids today for that. And it's going to have to come out of the 14-15 budget. So what I'm doing is, is getting approval that we can pull it out of this budget because we didn't, we weren't able to do it last year because time flew by.
But the, what road are we talking about? Road or roads that are going to be chip sealed or seal coated?
That was on the contract, uh, those are the incidents. Those roads there, I, I didn't remember, but I figured we all had them already, but this was last year's, this already has been gone.
But you, has the contract already been let?
No, that's what we're going to do today. We're going to open some bids today.
But there was, there was an amount of money appropriated to you last year that did not get spent.
Exactly.
Is that correct?
Exactly.
So that money was left over.
Yeah, and I'm looking to pay it out of this year.
And you, are these the contracts that you're going to proceed bids on today?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, but, but you can't, we're all specifically, which road or roads are good? How much mile road?
We got 25 miles of road. We've got 206, 388. We've got the, the town of Hoxton, Chesapeake, Falls City. Uh, everything that had actual pavement, we're going back and sealing it to preserve it is where we're at right now.
Okay. You know, I still like the places where they're, they're, uh, really, or doesn't have a re, rehab one?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's what's proposed right now on the next line, next item.
I don't have a problem with this. Can y'all hear me fine? Okay. Making sure I couldn't even hear myself. I don't have a problem with this. But Mike, I'm sure that you gave us, you gave us all these roads last year, right?
Yes.
So we, we've already had them, we've already went through them and everything. I don't remember, I apologize, I don't remember. But, I mean, I'm fine with it, it was supposed to be done last year, but we didn't get to do it last year, so it's coming out of this year's budget. And that is, that's the reason that this amount stayed left over in last year's budget.
Exactly. That's the reason why we had that house carry over because we couldn't get it started before October. So it's got to carry over.
I understand, but we're still taking care of it this year, right?
Yes, we're still taking care of this.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve item number eight as presented. Sorry, Maurice, you had a question?
Can we, is it, can we legally spend last year's money?
We're not spending last year's money. That one already carried over. We're using this year's money to put it into budget.
One second, I move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, number eight, just carried. Number nine. Discuss approved, disapproved road selection for 2014-15 Seal Coat programs. So those are chip sealed. All right.
Okay. What I have is I've got a proposed list of roads that I'm looking at getting chip sealed. Uh, there's the roads that we put the bottom material on. And what we're looking at doing is we've got to start covering them up. And I'm going to read the list of roads out. Uh, it's County Road, County Road 148 is going to go from 181 to County Road 145. County Road 189, it's going to go from 626, 1.5 miles. County Road 390, it's going to go from 887 to the county line. County Road 229 from 887 to 237. County Road 229 from 887 to the Wilson County line. 237 from Marshallina Creek, 1.5 miles. Uh, County Road 352, we're going to go from County, uh, State Highway 123 to the end of the county road. And then County Road 165, we're going from 72 to FM 2102. 326, we're going from the San Antonio River all the way to Roney to Main Street. County Road 122A, we're taking from the state's maintenance ends, one mile. 392, we're taking 122A, one mile. 320, we're going from state maintenance ends, one mile. County Road 333 from 123 to FM 887. County Road 256, County Road 233 to FM 887. County Road 352 from 123 to the head end. County Road 266 from State Highway 8 to County Road 263. And County Road 344 from Calvert Street to 792. And I want to emphasize on that road, that if they ever close 181 down, either between the hospital, the car city, or the hospital of Roney, that is the ultimate route that everybody's routed to, and that road needs to be taken care of pretty quick because of that incident we had with Supreme. That will let us have an alternate route where if we close section one, everybody has, that's still.
And that's when it comes out to about concrete finish, that's right?
Yes, yes, that new concrete finish. And it comes out at strikes. Yeah, right here, trying to see it before we stop.
But, but do you know how many miles of road that is?
Yeah, 33.4 miles.
Okay, and?
The estimated cost of it is $1,937,200. This is going to be the shoot. Do you hear this?
Uh, getting good.
All right, I'm good. That's Orange. Here it is.
Mike?
Yes, sir.
I, I don't have a problem with these roads either. That's what we, the money was intended for, to take care of the, our county roads. And I think, uh, y'all have a good selection here. I appreciate all y'all's hard work. I'll make the motion to approve item number nine as presented with, with all the county roads that you gave, you gave us today.
There were just a couple of questions I saw.
Yeah, go ahead.
This did not include SB 1747?
No, sir. No, sir.
I'll run one of those. But when you said it is, you're going to be rehabbing, explaining exactly what you're going to?
It's going to be chip sealed. We already got the large stone from the bottom material from the bottom. The bottom roads is basically with this is your right now.
Okay. Thinking of chip sealed roads, you've already put new material on?
Yes, sir. It's all had the material, we're doing a two course.
Okay. Uh, there's going to be motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Now, last one. Go back to number seven. Uh, we're discuss approved, disapproved receipt and opening of bids and award of 2014.
The old one.
These the ones you received? We have one apparently from Park Construction Company of Texas. And we're opening these, these bids at about 9:15 AM. This bid is dated October 13th, December 14th. Then one from Brandon Paving Company in Victoria. We have passes then. Stayed at 10:14:14. Brandon Paving in Victoria. I'll pass them back down, this way. This one is from F N Flow Construction Company in Rosses. My core grant is, is if you worked for any of these companies before?
Uh, Brandon is probably blue.
Brandon?
Yeah. Every time I do the state.
This is Black Copper Technology from Blanco Texas. Looking double, triple sealed on the road. You, Mr. Underbrand, will examine those are we, here I, I guess. Do we need an action to accept the bids or?
I think they're going to, they're going to take some time to look them over.
We've received them, we've, they've been opened. And now we're going to have, uh, a road bridge former supervisor and the engineer look Thank you. Number 10, discuss approved, Orange County Courthouse Foundation repairs final movement elevation report, Lorraine Data.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The, um, the contract for the courthouse foundation repairs required a surveyor to go out and monitor the settlement of the building foundation for a year after the foundation stabilization was complete. And this is our final report for the end of that year. I've, uh, presented several others to you that show the, the monthly movement. But on the first page that I handed you, it is the structural engineer agreeing that the settlement is within the tolerance of the construction documents and stating that the repairs have achieved the intended correction for the construction documents. So the structural engineer has signed off on the final elevation's report. The second packet is a copy of the elevation report. If you look at the last column, you'll see the total change over the course of that one year period. And the column right before that shows the change for that month. So which you'll see, if you compare it back to the beginning, we now are seeing very, very minor movement. And, uh, most of the points that are being monitored are not moving. And any of them that are moving, it's, it's .01 feet, which is less than an eighth of an inch, which is, your going, your buildings are always going to move a little bit. Um, every building does. So it's all within the tolerable range. And then what you'll see is the overall, which again shows the areas that we had to, um, modify more. Everything was less than one inch and it's maintaining its elevation as required.
Okay, now, with this in hand, we're in position now to go ahead and get our money from this court agreement. Or they grant.
We need a final, well, you can, the last.
I know, but I've cleared four other documents, but this was the one we had to wait for.
Yes, sir. This will allow the architect to do his closing report. And then when he does his closeout report, that goes to the THC and that finalizes that last 10%.
Is that Mr. Lindon?
Yes, sir. Yes.
All right. Anything else we know about this?
No, sir. It's, that project is considered, in our opinion and, and the THC opinion, that it has been completed. And as soon as Mr. Lindon reads his closeout report, it will go to the THC and it will allow the auditor to do the final reconciliation.
Any questions, Sean?
Yes. Just one comment. I think it was nine months monitoring, not a year.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's going to show us here nine months. I have it worth a cockroach.
You need an approval on this? Right?
I just said accept.
They reported it, it was home, we have to approve.
Just let it stay some.
Very good. Number 11, uh, presentation of proposals submitted for construction of the Orange County Communications Tower and Shelter, including the evaluation and ranking of offerors based on the best value criteria that is published in the proposal. Lorraine?
Thanks. We received the, um, proposals for the communication tower and the shelter. The way that we structured the proposal documents was to allow any contractors to propose just on the tower, just on the shelter, or offer combined credit if they were awarded both of them. The way you were able to get flexibility and, and achieve, if somebody could provide a, a more reasonable cost shelter, but they couldn't provide the tower, it allowed the county to take advantage of that. So the front page of what I passed out to you, proposal tabulation, and this came directly off of the proposal forms. We received four proposals. Saber Communications Corp. bid $215,769 for the tower, completed in 56 days. They did not give a bid for the, or proposal for the shelter. Quality Tower Services proposed $205,723 with a 60-day, um, completion. The Communication Shelter, prefabricated shelter was, um, proposed at $61,673 with an 80-day completion. They offered a $5,000 credit if they were awarded both the shelter and the tower. AMV Communications did not propose on the, um, tower. They proposed $19,400 for a communication shelter and 30 days to install the shelter. Allstate Towers proposed $270,100 for the tower. The calendar days was 90 calendar days. The Communication Shelter was proposed at $61,300 and 90 days for completion. So what you can see here is we have a smaller range for the tower. We're ranging between 205,000 and 270,000. On the Communication Shelter, we have a very large range. We have two proposals in the $61,000 range, within $300 of each other, and one at $19,400. The difference in these is, in our proposals, we allow the contractor to come up with, instead of the standard prefab concrete tower building that you'll see on the side of every highway, there are little brown buildings and they sit next to these towers. Instead of that, we allowed them to offer alternative solutions that would allow a more, um, reasonable cost for the shelter. And the $19,400 is, uh, one of those solutions. And so what I have for you here is a picture of the comparison between the two, so that you can get a feel for what the difference is between the 60,000 and the, and the 19,000, and then you can, um, evaluate that. This is the, these are your typical, you know, buildings that are on the side of the road. It's a prefabricated, uh, tower shelter. And they're designed and installed specifically for these communication towers. This is the one that we have, two proposals, one for $61,600 and one for $61,300. The, the second proposal is for a, it's a converted container. So while it's not as aesthetically, um, aesthetic, it is, it has been converted to be, to act as your communication shelter building. Um, we had a number of questions that we sent over to AMV Communications, which is, is run by, um, Mr. Nathan Sherman, who's also, um, involved in, in, he does the dispatch work for, and communications work for Orange County. And we asked him to confirm the information about his proposal. So we asked him for pictures, which I've attached for you. We asked him for a description of the shelter, which he said it's an eight-foot by 20-foot metal cargo container retrofitted to serve as the equipment shelter with central air conditioner, heating unit, fluorescent lighting, cable trays, cable handling, entry ports, and grounded, grounding bars. Um, then we asked, of course, for their safety record, because that's part of the evaluation tab that you'll see and we'll be presenting to you next. Their, um, number of these shelters installed in the last five years is three. And then who will be in charge of the project? The resume, again, that's part of your proposal evaluation, is the quality and experience of the person that will be managing the project for you. And then for some, we asked him for some references. So that's what you see on the, on the front page of what you're looking at. We also asked him to please confirm that the shelter proposal will include all items under description of shelter, item three of the request for proposals attached, i.e. engineered foundation, cable tray lights, AC power, et cetera. So again, we were trying to make sure that his proposal for the 19,000 includes everything you need. And the only real difference is it's a metal cargo container versus the, um, the concrete, the actual concrete prefabricated tower building. And, and he confirmed, he's saying, yes, it is all included. Um, depending on which way the court decides to go, we will want to make sure that we get detailed information with the contract that would be signed with him that shows each of these items being supplied, um, to make sure. But he's, he's telling us it's, it's an equal product. However, the difference is the concrete shelter versus the metal shipping container. And then, of course, the price tag, which is a $40,000 price tag. Now, when we look at, again, the cost of the shelters, $60,000 seems outrageous for a little eight-by-20 building that's sitting on the side of the road. It does include the special equipment and grounding, R56 grounding, and there, there's a lot, um, involved in it. And I did want to share an email, I can forward this to you, um, and you can review it. But one of the references we called, when we were calling around about the communications tower, they, they installed, they installed hundreds and hundreds of communications towers and shelters. And what he shared with me is a 10-by-20 shelter, um, communication shelter. Let me back up first real quick. We also asked the general contractor, what would they charge to build this CMU block communication shelter onsite? Because we wanted to compare who we do it for less expensive if he just builds it with the Masons he has there. His price came in at over $100,000 for this 10, 8-by-20 building, which again was, it's hard to even swallow. What, um, what Paul shared with me, one of the references, I don't know him, I just, he, I called about references of, of towers because it was part of our evaluation, is getting references on the people that submitted proposals. And he said, "We built a 10-by-20, um, communication shelter in George West with an in-house design and local labor," because they were also dealing with the high cost of the, the oil, et cetera, where the market is, and they thought they could save money. He said it ended up costing us over $100,000. We could have bought the prefab building and installed it for 50 to 60,000. So the only thing I'm showing you here is 50 to 60, this was two years ago in George West, that concrete building cost 50 to 60,000 then. Um, and if they, and they did choose to build it onsite and it cost them a And if they, and they did choose to build it onsite, and it cost them over $100,000, which is what our contractor's telling us. So I'm just giving you a comparison of, when you look at these numbers, they have to do with where the market is. And I think that that's helpful in your evaluation.
All right, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Do you want to design the shelter? Does that include all the equipment with it? Because I'm looking at one from Mr. Sherman. And it shows that it already has an attached air conditioner attached. I guess, other, other stuff there to make that thing more, the racks and the ceiling and, and the switch boxes and stuff, like it's just coming with the equipment already?
Both of them. Yes, sir. Both of them do. So that was part of the proposal documents, is we listed out what it had to include, which is the air conditioning, the racks, the cable trays, the power, the lighting, the grounding. All of that was in the proposal. So, and that's where when, when Nathan Sherman sent back to me and I asked him, "Please confirm it includes everything," and he sent me the pictures and said, "Yes." So, we need to get into more detail, because one thing is, on the, on the concrete communication shelter, they always put two air conditioning units. Each air conditioning unit will be able to wholly condition that space if one goes out. And Mr. Sherman, he did not tell me how many he has in there, one or two. But that would be, in the picture, he only shows one, but that would be an item that we could easily negotiate with him. If the county decided to go down this road, we could find, confirm that he only has one unit, because the specs just call for the AC unit. The communication shelters, industry standard is to have the two. But that's an item that if you want to add one, you could easily do it for a lot less than the $40,000 difference between the two, you know, cost.
Are you telling me, make sure I have the metal building. Well, it's aesthetically nice, man. I've used one of those for farming ranches, for storage materials. And I started having water or ceiling problems right away. You know, those things have been on chips, been out to sea, been exposed to salt water, and I've picked up the best one I could find, and I got it, but I still end up having to place a roof over the top of it after just a few years. I'm just wondering whether, I don't know what he does with the roof, try to make it stand up, but that's, that would be a turn on.
Yes, that's, that container thing, you're gonna have to spend maintenance money on it every year.
Where's concrete?
If you paint it and all this, you do the concrete thing, you're finished.
The specifications do call for a 10-year weather tightness warranty, and the references we called have told us that the container has stayed weather tight. However, you know, we're going based on what the warranty is. And, and the other references that Nathan had is, if you have any problem, he's right on it and he takes care of it. All I can go by is what the reference is, because I have the same, normally you would have the same feeling is, a metal container versus a building with a roof, how, how weather tight are they? So in our investigations, we asked the questions, and we were told, the three that Nathan has installed, they're satisfied, he responds quickly, and they haven't had leaking problems. Now, none of them have been there for the full 10 years. So, everything's of course a risk, if, because the warranty is only as good as, you know, if, if Nathan is still in business in 10 years, which there's no reason for him to not be. He's been and he services, but these are decisions that the court would have to make.
All right. Are these containers, like remodeled ones, or are they brand new? The ones that he's selling for $20,000?
I think they're, you know-
Yeah, they're, my understanding is they're remodeled, but we can ask that question. It, it, yeah. It's retrofitted.
The only concern that I had was, the metal, the metal one against the concrete one. The metal one's gonna have a metal foundation, of course, so we're gonna have to protect it and, you know, save, save our investment. We're gonna have to pour a slab of concrete down there and set it on, I mean, we just set it on raw dirt. It's gonna rot, it's gonna rot.
Well, again, the proposal documents required an engineered foundation. Now, they did not submit to us the documents on that, on what that engineered foundation is, and that would be something I was saying, if you wanted to go this way, we would have to get a lot more detailed information from him before you sign the proposals with him.
So in other words, there'll be another cost to this, which is the engineered foundation?
No, he's saying it includes an engineered foundation. Now, what that is, whether it's piers and galvanized beams, I don't know, because they did not submit that with us. And that's something that we would have to get more detailed information. But he's saying it includes an engineered foundation, but they didn't submit the documents.
What about the concrete shelter?
Same thing, it's an engineered foundation.
But neither one of them submitted what it was?
The, the concrete shelter folks submitted a lot more information, and whether, my understanding is it's a concrete foundation, but I don't, I'm sorry, I don't remember. I would have to put my fingers on it, and see. If they actually gave us a, the drawing.
Isolation in a metal building, is it exonerated?
Yeah. I would, I would, yeah, it would have to be.
But I do know, I mean, one thing I-
Some of the pictures of the inside of it?
One thing that we do know-
It's all, like, I'm sorry, I'm not going.
One thing we do know is, like, the air conditioning, you know, is one question. It appears he's only providing one versus two. So there's still some more evaluation that we need to be done. However, I would need to know, does the court want us to, are they considering the metal container? Do they want us to pursue that farther?
One, sorry, somebody has a question.
Yes.
I have seen the metal building. The metal building was put in as an option, not knowing exactly what the tower was gonna come in at, because there were some options, this tower may be way almost $300,000. The metal building, again, was, they put it in as a option if the tower was extremely high, and the county didn't have a whole lot of money left over to go to this route. And it's an option. Is it, you're fixing to spend a lot of money on the jail, you're spending a lot of money on the tower. If you want to buy, do the concrete, then do the concrete. Again, it was just solely as a-
In case-
In case of- This part of the balloon went way big, you'd have something here.
I can't see why we've been longer on this tower, as well as on the jail, and try to compromise on that building, that clearly is gonna have more maintenance issues than the concrete block building. I'd rather use the concrete.
And not only that, dude, the equipment inside that building is very sensitive to moisture and dirt and all that stuff. And if you go the cheap route, you're gonna have long-term implications on that equipment down the road. So it has to be sealed tight in order for things to be done properly. If you want it to last the life of that jail, it's just better to go the concrete route. Moisture is the number one enemy to radio equipment, and it's going to destroy it.
Anything else?
Well, I, I asked about this, asked if I could see one of these buildings, and I was told to go to Kendall County, because I went to Vern yesterday and looked. And I talked to a man named Jeffrey Pink, who told me, "Next time I see Shelby, slap the side of the head and wake him up." Anyway, so I went to, I went and looked at this building, and what they had there, it, it looked similar to this, but it's a fiberglass building. And it's eight feet by 14 feet, and it's on galvanized, I-beam skids, setting on a concrete slab. And he told me that Sherman installed that, and I was told that Rain Dillow knows the kind of work that Sherman does, and they do good work. Anyway, if it was a fiberglass building like that, that I saw looked at with a stainless steel door, I wouldn't have any problem with it. But of course, this is a metal building that they're proposing. But anyway, what I, what I was sent to look at, it looks very similar to this one, except it's fiberglass on the outside. And it does have a stainless steel door. So, anyway.
What was the cost of that one?
Well, I don't know what it cost, but anyway, he said that A&amp;E had installed it, and that's where I would refer to, to look at one that they had put in, what I asked for. And so I thought it would be, I thought they were proposing the same thing, but it's not exactly, because this would be a metal container. If it was fiberglass. Yes, ma'am?
Nobody's bothered to submit here, we do get hurricanes once in a while. If you've got something sitting on skids, it would be more susceptible to moving in a hurricane than one that's sitting more solid on cement.
I gather that the general comment I've heard from our commissioners and judges is, we should go with the metal building, we should go with the $60,000 ones, is that correct?
There'll be, I need to make a motion, I will ask, but we accept that combined bid at $105,000 for the tower and $61,000 for the building, and get the $5,000 credit for one of those, one of those quality tower services.
I've got a question on the tower, though. Who's building, who builds that tower? Saber builds their own tower, correct?
Saber builds their own tower, Quality's providing a Roachen. And-
It's a quality tower.
Roachen is a quality tower?
Oh, yeah. Roachen's a natural branch, it's, it's a very good brand, very good district.
And the cable trays and everything are all there, anything additional they'll have to run or-
Yes, sir. Everything is, is all inclusive. And one nice thing that you have about going with the same contractor for the tower and the building, you know, you don't have that disconnect of making sure that somebody says, "Well, I thought they were putting that in, I thought they were putting that in." Even if your specs appear clear, you can always sometimes have finger pointing. You have one person responsible for everything, for the lightning protection and everything. It's all comprehensive, and that's an advantage that you would have if you have the same contractor doing it.
And the tower will be, what, a four-day tower?
This one is, I believe it's three.
Three?
Yeah, I believe it's three sides, there's no guy wires, and it's on piers.
Can I say again, will you? All in favor? I will go with the bid for the quality towers.
Can I just real quickly, the, it was separated into two separate items. One was a presentation of the proposals, and then the second item, that's what the attorney had, the way the attorney had told us we need to present, is the second item-
Okay, that was item number 12.
Yes, sir, and, and if you'll, the second page under the bid tabulation, you can see the ranking, because since these were proposals, the contractors need to be selected based upon the, the ranking and the score that was in the proposal documents. So let me just present that to you very quickly. Thirty percent of the, of the ranking was cost, but also 30% was the reputation. That way, say some, a contractor was lower on cost, however, he did not have the reputation and was not completing his work well, it, it allows you to evaluate both the quality of the contractor as well as the cost. On the top right-hand corner, over on the shelf half of the page of about the shelter, you can see Saber's at 3.7 for overall score, Quality Towers was at 6.9, A&amp;B Communication was at 9.65, and Allstate Towers at 5.4. Of course, we've already talked about the difference. The 9.65 is a ranking based on the items that are here, that did not take into consideration the concrete versus the metal, which was an item that needed to be presented. So your second ranking would be the 6.9, which was Quality Tower. Then if you look at your actual tower over on the top right-hand side, Saber was ranked at 9.45, Quality Tower was ranked at 9.75, and then Allstate was 5.45. So the combined, Quality Tower was the highest ranking for the tower, and Quality Tower was also the highest ranking for the equal concrete building. And then of course, as the judge said, you'll receive a $5,000 savings on the combined cost of the two.
Okay, so at this point, I don't need to make a motion to accept bid of Quality Tower. If so, I'll make the motion. All in favor? Great. We have agreed on the Quality Tower.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thirteen, discussed, approved, disapproved, authorized purchase of 20-foot Conex style storage container, $3,715, and one 26 by 31 carport price, $5,107.50, and 12 by 31 carport price, $2,500, for temporary housing of vehicles, equipment, and supplies. I'm going with Kelly.
These are quotes I've received, Superior Carports out of Victoria. These are just your standard carport. They come, set everything up, eager in the ground. The larger of the carports, the 26 by 31, it, it has a, the back covered in, and then a half side on it, because it'll be, that'll be the north side, so keep the wind and the rain from blowing up and under there. The other one is just a carport without any sides on it. It'll be setting over, to the side of the building, and it'll house one ambulance under it. The box is a shipping container. We figured since this was on a temporary basis of doing things, that that would work, and we can actually run wire to it and put lights in there for, this will be just to store our, our stuff that doesn't need to be climatized, anything, not medical supplies, i.e. IV fluids, medications, things of that nature.
It is, these buildings are proposing, are you referring to just one? Are you selecting one of these, or what?
No, sir, this is for, for all three of these. The, the one, the one carport, it will house two ambulances. Unfortunately, they don't make one wide enough to put all three of our ambulances in, so. And we don't have the actual physical space, if they did, to put them all under one. With the construction area that will be there, we're gonna be real limited on space, so we had to get kind of creative about where to place everything in that lot.
So this is storage for your equipment and everything, and for the ambulances?
Yes, sir.
During the time the EMS building is being constructed? I assume your existing structures can be torn down?
Yes, sir.
Good.
And what needs to utilize for what's constructed?
Well, once it's over, of course, we have the tile now. We expect to keep the smaller one, and just move that to an area where then we can use it to park the tile under. The larger one, it can be utilized by someone else in the county, i.e. road bridge, sheriff's department, and the same for the box. Of course, everybody knows, big thing right now in medicine is Ebola. Where we're going, what we're doing, we'll probably talk a little bit more about that later, but we're, we have, of course, we have equipment there at EMS for emergency management. I don't know if that's something they could use later on, but storage is storage.
Good. Any questions?
I'm literally approving number 13.
Seconding?
All in favor?
Thank you.
Do we have some relevant budgets this year, budget? Fourteen, steer and oil and gas operators will present information on joint trash truck project in Karnes County. South Texas Energy and Economic Running Table has coordinated effort with Carnival Phillips COG Pioneer Marathon and BHP Hilton to remove trash from Karnes County roadways, also by Glennis Trucks. But you're not Glennis?
Uh, no, I'm this. I tried to be.
My name is Haley Curry. I'm the external director for the South Texas Energy Network Ground Table, or STEER.
Right, okay.
Thank you for having me here today. I won't take too much of your time. We just wanted to give you guys an update on how the trash truck program is working in Karnes County. in Carnes County. Uh, since, um, January and through September, the trash truck has collected over 53,000 pounds of trash in Carnes County and will continue to do so over the next remaining months and so on into 2015. Um, it is an effort that our companies know that, you know, there's a lot of economic benefit happening to the counties, but there's also a lot of other impacts and one of those impacts is fashion of roads. Our companies, um, that we represent have stringent protocols and rules and regulations around trash and litter. Uh, we know that we're not 100% accurate all the time, but we're always striving to be better. Our companies have put in multiple different avenues to try to curb that, um, thought process of littering, including education, dumpsters at sites, things of that sort. This is one of those things that we've come together as a group. Uh, Glenna Strauss from ConocoPhillips, Brianna Lissy from Marathon Oil, Carolyn Petruzy from EOG, and we have Rhonda Fotades, excuse me, from Pioneer. Also sponsoring this trash truck is BHP, who's unable to be here today, but, um, Ladee and Tom are, are part of that project. Uh, we've contracted through the Wood Group and Furman and his men have been, um, going around different areas where any road in Carnes County, um, they go and pick up trash. Glenna Strauss is your contact, so if you see a road that needs some trash picked up on it, that's your contact, call her, she'll dispatch the Wood Group out to go and get that trash. I know that we've had a few examples of that working in the past where, um, we received a call, there's trash on the road, and they've been able to dispatch it within 24 hours to go pick up that trash, if not earlier.
Is this, is this trash truck being manned full-time? Is it out all the time or...
They, um, it's five days a week.
You're trying to be taking turns putting personnel on the truck or how does that work?
How are you, are you doing, are you switching out your crews?
Same crew.
Same crew.
From the Wood Group?
From the Wood Group.
Okay.
Uh, the trash truck is outside. Um, it has a new sign on it. Um, we do like to have comments, so if you see it on the side of the road, you have something that you want to say, please let them know. They do dictate those. We will share that anecdotal, anecdotal evidence and, and different reports that we hear from the county on, on how they're feeling the trash truck is going to be and report that to you as well.
Do they pick up tires that these trucks have had? Well, we have three along my roadway, 627.
627.
Now, may I, now, may I make another comment?
Yes.
The, uh, the company that's rehabbing FM 627, in, in front of our place, had a flagger the other day. And we pick up our road in front of our place, okay? So we keep it clean, okay? This flagger was sitting there all day long. Once he leaves, we find ten or, there's ten or eleven pieces of trash, bottles, soda water bottles, uh, plastic bottles, cups, paper cups that are sitting right there where he'll sit and then pick it. So today they're out there doing it again, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go talk to that contractor and say, "Hey, bullets might be fine, you kick that trash up."
Yeah? Well, can't condone bullets, but...
I mean, you know, you're a contractor, you're a little better than...
But I, we'll make sure we hit that road as well.
627.
627. Um, and I'm sorry for that.
But the contract is beefy as well.
Shouldn't be saying that.
I know that Glenna's been very active and strictly used them very well.
Was there any way to often train the people that work for these all companies? They stay at a place that has dumpsters. Can't they be trained to carry their trash with them?
I, I guess Rhonda can attest to some of the things that our companies are doing to, to try to enforce that.
Can I say something, please? We've been kind of dealing with this trash issue for quite a while, and I think it's wonderful, we're totally here to help with the situation. However, I think it's still very important that we stay out, something with our county that will continue to, I think they put into the budget to have a code compliance officer that will start to, um, put some restrictions on this and, and start to possibly prosecute some of these people that are doing this to stop, because I understand how much y'all... Can you just explain to the public how much y'all are spending per pound to pick up this trash per day? Because it is just an astronomical amount of money that's going into this. And we appreciate it, but it, that's, that's just the man made that's helping this. We need to get to the root of the problem and it's through education, like you were saying. And it will also be through, you know, deterrence to say, "Hey, this happens, we do this, you're typically, you're fine, you're prosecuted."
It's about $4 a pound for us and, like I said, through this year, we, we've picked up over 53,000 pounds of trash, so...
So that's about $20,000 in the month?
Twenty thousand? So that's $20,000 in the month to pick up other people's trash. Almost intentionally conducive to the fact that if you had some deterrence out there that would help, so, hey, it's just like the kid that runs in the hall, you know? Somebody stays in from recess, suddenly they're, they're going to stop running in the hall.
No, we, we understand, you know, this is one, like I said, this is one arm of our approach. Uh, I'm going to turn it over to Rhonda for just a second to share some of those examples.
And thank y'all for what you're doing to help us try to keep it nice, but...
Oh, we're keeping, we're liking the way you're doing it. Uh, and it really helps to have your input, you know, letting, we need to know, you know, we can't fill every single road every single day. So it really helps when you communicate with Commissioner's Court or with Glenna's directly to make sure that these guys know where to go to pick up that trash, so we can make sure we're alleviating that burden, um, instead of prolonging it, along with, just turn it over to you.
I think training your employees, uh, would help. I mean, they get, take their trash and bag to their dumpster where they're staying.
Well, it's not so much the employees too, it's people in the county. When you start seeing feed sacks and bags of trash in the city and stuff, you know, there's a lot more to it. I know that the companies on their, their behalf, they talk to their people about speeding and they talk to them at every safety meeting about collecting trash, keeping the trash, trying to make things clean. It's just, it's just a, a, a discipline type thing that people have to start doing is picking it back for themselves.
So if a champion, if we, if I'm following one of those pickups, authentic pickups, first thing you know, there goes a lot of...
We're, we're picking up our trash, the first thing they do is throw out more bottles, water bottles, plastic bottles.
Let me just add this real quickly. We worked for over, over a year in Kennedy trying to get a, a company to put a dumpster in, and a nice company, that they continued to put the plastic bags over the, um, the, the, the post. And they would blow down into the rivers and, you know, I mean, over a year. Finally, 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 after that long, a dumpster was placed there. Now, guess what they're still doing? They're still putting those plastic bags over the post with the dumpster there. So, you know, I think it's time somebody goes by there, catches somebody and says, "Hey", you know, "This is what's going on." So you can put the dumpsters out. You, like, you can lead the horse to water, but you can't make him drink, so...
You guys, my name is Rhonda Fotades and I'm Public Affairs for Pioneer Natural Resources. And I wanted to first let you know that we hear you. You know, we are with you. We do not want the area to be littered. And so we have taken some very proactive measures to try to alleviate some of the problem. Let me tell you some of the things that Pioneer has done. At each of our locations, we have an ice house. Guys, those ice houses do not have any bags. Those guys take their ice chests, they go in, they scoop the ice out, they put it in their ice chest, and they leave our site with no bags. So we're actively addressing that and I think that's a very proactive measure. So the second thing is we're training our employees, okay? Our employees know we talk trash all the time. The thing that we're doing about that is our gatekeepers have been instructed at each of our locations, they are charged with inspecting the beds of those trucks of our employees to be sure that all the trash is properly disposed of before they leave to go out on the road and see something fly out the back of their vehicle, because we cannot allow that to happen. We are in favor of having our areas as beautiful as possible. We love the raw flowers. The next thing that we are doing is we're encouraging our employees that if you witness an infraction where something flies out the back of the truck, hopefully there'll be a 1-800 number on the back of that vehicle, or you can get their license number, you can call them. We are encouraging our employees to follow up on any infractions. So we're in your corner and we're on your team. We hear you and we're doing the best that we know how to try and rectify the situation. Not that we cause it all, thank you, Mr. Dujnick, you're exactly right. We don't cause it all, for sure, but we're trying to be very good stewards of the area.
One of the things I've always noticed, and I've never been in one of these trucks, though, you know, you see the big, uh, water tankers as well as the fuel carriers, and they, uh, I wonder, do they have any kind of a trash or some little litter bag, whatever you want to call it, in the truck? Because I see a lot of like trucks, chicken boxes and things like that, you know? I pick up my trash too and we see a bit, you know, and it's about 80% water bottles, but there's also a lot of trucks, chicken, doll boxes, things like that going out. And sometimes I think those guys, they get a truck cabin and it's kind of crowded and everything, you know? There ought to be some way to really devise something that, that can be distributed to these contractors, truck drivers, where it would be easy for them to put their trash in there and then at the end of the day dispose of it. I don't, you know, because everybody's ever eaten trash, but, you know, there's always kind of a problem, what do you do, the sacks are hanging, it's just so tempting, just pitch a window, which is what happens to somebody. And, uh, it's extremely difficult to catch big litter. You, I watch, I don't ever see it happening, but I see all the trash on the road, so I know it happens.
I caught something yesterday. We called, we called in on him and, you know, and it ended up, it was a subcontractor of a subcontractor of one of our companies and they are going to address it. So, I mean, you, we, we, when we do see it, we do report it and we hope that the employees do the same and we encourage them to do the same. Uh, that's an excellent thought process. I know some of them do do that, but we'll go back to our companies and give that idea of...
Make it easy, guys. You know, they're busy and they're, they're doing things going on and, just make it...
I think you're right. You're, you're very right. A lot of it's not to make your company employees themselves, it's to...
I was just assured you then, all of us are doing training on trash and we're trying to get our, you know, with our company, the contractors, if they come in, they're getting the same lesson. One thing I will tell you is that if you want, and, and Haley said this, I'm going to give you my cell phone number as a commitment to getting Furman, and I will call him and tell him it's 361-318-0781. And I'll be glad to direct, um, Furman and his crew over there. And Furman, I believe you'll confirm that the heaviest thing that they pick up, and they pick them up every day, is tires. So pieces of tires are getting off the road, which also, which is also a safety hazard if you've ever run over one or tried to avoid one. So we appreciate the work that these guys are doing and, and, uh, the part of cleaning up. And Cindy, I totally agree with you. We'd like to not have to pay this money. So education and discipline of that kid running down the hall is the way that we can do this, but it's going to be a long-term process. Now, I know everybody appreciates the effort that y'all are making. It's just that we all just need to be aware, and it's not just the oil companies, but whoever it is, you know, we need to make them responsive. And we have talked about some other American measures of reminding people at the place of purchase that they're going to have trash and what they need to do with it. So that's something that's a long-term agenda item for us.
What do y'all do with the tire stock, right?
I'm going to defer, where do you do, where do you take the tires that you place?
Do they, do they probably station in current seating?
They, they bring them to us. Yeah, 'cause we send in the bill and...
Yeah, 'cause we have a trailer there now that's, this past weekend, I think we picked up a trailer and a half, we're, I mean, talking, eating with a trailer and a half that has us.
Yes.
I mean, if we had, I think we picked up probably close to five, six hundred tires.
We noticed in DeWitt County yesterday they were getting a grant to, to deal with that, so maybe you can talk to Judge Fowler about dealing with that.
With the tires?
Yes, sir. But thank you for having us and, and...
Thank you, sir.
Put your trash where it goes. Right place, not on the road. Thank you, Furman. Y'all want to see the truck is outside.
Now, everybody has that number and their phone will be ringing off. Yes, sir. Including mine.
Okay. Eighty-one. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
All right. Okay. Everybody got your great recommendations in, we're ready to go.
Very good presentation.
It was nice. All right, discuss, consider an act on allowing Texas Commission on Environmental Quality as TCEQ, place air quality monitor device, possibly two, on county-owned property. Property located just west of the county jail and parking lot. Area to be fenced and need electricity will be TCEQ or unfilled. No cost, no cost to Carnes County. It says allow Carnes County Jets to sign an agreement to be submitted by TCEQ legal department. What this about, there's been, uh, I'm sure, you know, some question about what the effect on air quality, some of the Eagle Ford operations might be having. And, uh, TCEQ has come under some pretty intense scrutiny and criticism, and I've done for not having any air monitoring devices set up, permanent air monitoring devices set up right in the middle of the Eagle Ford production area. Closest one to here is somewhere up in Florida, which is some distance from the actual project. Uh, they are proposing to put one here, uh, in Carnes County. And we went out there, they, uh, and looked at some potential sites. They were thinking possibly right here in Carnes City might be a good place. You can't go in any direction from Carnes City, so no matter which way the wind is blowing, you're going to be, you know, receiving air from production facilities, yet it's not just sitting right on top of somebody's flare stack, so, you know, it's, it's, but it should give you a pretty good overall idea. I'll let you take it from there.
Good morning, Commissioner. Thank you for everyone's time. I am here to maybe address any questions the commission may have, uh, on particular monitors we're planning for here. Uh, as you mentioned, it's, uh, it's a cost that the agency will entail, which you need a location and a, and a contract to be written, an agreement to where that location would be, and, and to ensure that we have that location, we have access to our status of the monitor.
May I?
Oh, yes, um, my name is George Ortiz. I'm here to address any questions the commission may have.
Okay. Anyone?
Uh, this has been going on for a while. Uh, the TCEQ has been working with us trying to, you know, find a location. The site, once it's established, will be monitored. You can monitor, any citizen can monitor, look at the site on the TCEQ website. If there's anything, my understanding, anything that comes up that's questionable, it's, uh, flagged, be bold, we'll talk, talk to them. Uh, you can look at it, uh, I guess you'll have to see, it'll be like the current, the next day will be the, the last day's, uh, uh, data.
Correct. The, the data's going to be, uh, continuous, uh, in the pressure we present, or at this point, uh, I can speak on to how, how soon the, the readings will be, uh, on there, but, I think it'll be sooner than, than the day prior.
But the two, it'll be able to monitor 46 or 26?
Uh, around 60 constituents.
60 types of, of constituents? And the main two that they're really worried about is the Benzines?
Benzine's going to be one, that is, that is going to be one constituent. H2S is the other one being proposed, depending on, we can locate two traders whose site. They require a special trader.
And, uh, with that, they would like, they wanted to have it set in an area where there's a population with Carnes City right now, it's center of the county pretty much and it's got a good population. Uh, it's a good, it's a good thing to have this county out. In climate news, they've been worrying about Carnes County, Central California's office has, uh, they've been very active in all this. With all that, I'm making a motion to allow TCEQ to place tomorrow. Sir, the monitors in Carnes County.
Second. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
I would make one comment on that. Uh, I don't know whether, did you say possibly on the parking lot here? Okay, how about at the dump site, I don't know, why not?
Because you got the fire that's probably right here, but it would probably upset some of your friends.
But if you tried to put it on the courthouse lawn, you'd get THC, where are you going to put it?
On the, on the co, on the parking lot, not on lawn.
Parking lot.
Right here behind the old jail. Between here and the old jail.
All right, then I have to ask THC if you can put it there.
Well, yeah, I don't think they'll do that. It's a good area, right? Because it's a high point.
What does this device look like? What does the device look like?
It's, uh, usually is a cargo trailer, uh, about sixteen, about 16 foot long, 12 foot long. It's a...
Right here behind the old jail. Between here and the old jail.
Then I have to ask T H C if you can put it there.
I don't think they'll do that. It's a good area, right? Because it's a high point.
What does this device look like? What does this device look like?
It's usually is a cargo trailer, about sixteen foot long, twelve foot long trailer. And it's an enclosed trailer. Probably two of them. The side would be fenced in about forty foot by forty foot with six foot fence around, chain fence about one on top. We'll limit access to it. And then we'll have a tower.
Collecting device, the power will talk.
And we'll have one tower about ten meters tall.
So, if it's forty by four, you're going to have to have a fenced area fifty by fifty at least?
No, the fenced area will be forty by forty.
Forty by forty fenced area.
Correct.
Then we'll be, yeah, certainly.
Not that I'm worried. But it'll be, yeah, it's a good location. There's production facilities all around Carnes City, every direction. No matter which way the wind's flowing, you know, you'll get some, some air from areas where the production will take place. But it's not, like I said, it's not sitting right next to somebody's central delivery point where it's going to be concentrated. But it should give you a pretty good reading on what the citizens are breathing. Hopefully, there've been no problems. And if there are, well, then the companies will take the immediate steps, I would assume, to make sure the breathing is healthy. Okay? Correct?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Number sixteen. Discuss, consider act Carnes County allowing use of red light cameras on school buses in an effort to keep children safe in school zones and that school bus stops getting on and off school buses. And allow Carnes County Jets to sign a contract that approved. There's a comment on that. It says American Traffic Solutions is sponsor of Texas School Zone Safety Program. A T S supplies all the equipment at no cost to county and school districts. Video is viewed. A T S forwards all potential violators to the Carnes County Sheriff's Office for review and final review. If review confirms violations, A T S will send a notice of violation and assess penalty. A T S gets a percentage of the penalty and the county gets the remainder. Sherrod?
That's right. Dwayne. Sherrod Villanueva was at a sheriff's conference. He made contact with these people. Him and I, Mr. Abrams and the school superintendents, we met in this very room last week to discuss, to discuss what they do and how they do it. And with you've seen lately about the, on Channel Twelve and all the other news about the school buses being threatened by eighteen-wheel trucks and other people, we felt it was something that we could implement at no cost to the system of Carnes County. Dwayne, you want to go ahead?
The, the company that's going to assist us in installing the cameras on the buses is grant money that's paid to the Sheriff's Association. We met with all the school districts. We monitored the Carnes City I S D school zone a couple of weeks ago for thirty minutes. And the thirty minutes, we had like thirty-one violations. That speed limit there's twenty-five. You had speed limits, you know, people going forty-five, fifty, thirty-seven. I think they had like fifty-six. We did Carnes City, I have, we can receive several calls from Carnes City I S D, their route to, on Highway eighty, the Gillette area, where the buses will stop to load and unload and the trucks, they didn't even just go, even though the lights are blinking. Kennedy's another one that has called me, the seventy-two West, twenty-one oh two route. They're also facing the same thing. So, we got with that company. On the twentieth, we're also, we're going to monitor and some of the buses with cameras that go on the routes. So, on the twentieth, we're going to have some installed and bring that back to Commissioner's Court to show them the, the traffic out on the routes.
And when the sign, you know, like the school bus has that sign stopped, it flaps out, so then it opens up that camera and it comes on. And.
Have you seen any of the video of capable of easily reading the license numbers standing there?
Yes, sir.
Get a picture of the driver?
If you go under American Traffic Solutions, they have several videos that they've seen where they use them at different schools. Hayes County is using it right now. And you can see, once the camera activates, how it monitors the vehicles going by.
Let's, you know, let's just say that an eighteen-wheeler or a C D L driver blows through a, or passed a school bus. What are you going to do to the driver?
What they'll do is issue him a citation. Then he'll come, he'll come to see the tape.
Well, I'd like to make recommendations. Take your C D L driver. If they're going to blow through a, a school bus stop with the lights flashing, I'd like to recommend that the, the, number one, make it a zero tolerance county. And number two, revoke their, their C D L. I mean, this is a school bus.
I, I don't know that we would have authority to revoke it. I was thinking about, certainly, we have zero tolerance and the justice courts will not reduce charges or will not change the charges. And the county courts will do the same. You can feel that if you want, we're going to go the proper way. After you're going to get a conviction of that particular offense, I think that may affect their C D L license. I don't know. I don't know what the state is. Robert?
Judge, can I make a comment? The current law on the books is upon a previous conviction, your second offense, your license is subject to be suspended. So, that's already in the law.
And the other thing is, I think the R B S R may notify their employer immediately. And when that happens, whether your driver has been charged in defense and we're making a big effort in our county to keep our school kids safe and this kind of thing. And see if that doesn't look pressure.
I would like to suggest, though, that, you know, D W I C D L is one thing. But D W, or C D L, that goes past the school bus that stopped should be space of circumstance. But if you hit a kid, it's, it's all.
Exactly. But, but this, under this system here, this is, this is a company that, it's like going to a toll road. You know, they flash you, you don't pay your deal. The state doesn't come after you, the toll road people. Like, you know, and that's why this is, these companies, this company will be the one that's enforcing it, not the state. But it, you know.
Oh, it isn't it? All right, exactly.
It's an agent of the church.
We just not go on there, on our driving right?
It does?
No.
We were told to do not.
What, what do they?
They'll stop other ones.
It's, it's, at least we're monitoring the traffic. You can laugh all you want, but it's, it's been, it's been a proven thing so far that it's been done.
If you've been monitoring, but there's no penalty, what, what?
Penalty is, there is a penalty. You're, you're standing, these guys are fine.
So, what is the percentage allocation to the county from the assessed penalties by A T S?
As far as what they're going to do, they will be, they will be back.
So, there's not been set sixty, forty, seventy, thirty, whatever.
I mean, I, I think it's a good idea to take, take what these guys do.
You got the license, remember?
I just wish we had a little more teeth than we now, you know.
Same thing with your car. I think if you, you say, I leave my car to somebody and they blow through the stop, through the stop line. Hey, they get the license claim and then they said, that's a question we ask. They said most of the time, it's that person who, who was in the car with the painter, the painter. And in some cases, it's two hundred fifty dollars for a violation, you know. And it was a, it was a Hayes County.
And it's going to be up to commissioners to, as far as the fines, to set what, you know, what, the fines, what we all want to make.
But I mean, all right, auto driver, I get this, whatever it is, citation, ticket, whatever from this company. I just throw it in the trash. How does it get enforced? If it's not issued by a law enforcement agency, if there's not a court involved, how do I enforce it?
Everything will come to us, Judge. And we'll, we'll look at the, the unit and we'll sign off.
You will issue the ticket.
Right. We'll sign off.
All right. Then that's different. Okay.
Wait, wait. How, that monitor, which way is it monitored? The whole county traffic or?
Both ways, both ways, yes. But if you, like I say, if you go under American Traffic Solutions, it'll show how it monitors.
If it doesn't cost us anything, and we're going to have an opportunity to write, take it, figure we're doing something really dangerous, I'm going to. I'm moving, approve it. And as we go forward, if we figure out how, what ways to make it more of an impact on the driver, we want to do, let's think of that.
And they will work with us if that's the case.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Seventeen. Discuss, consider act on advertising for construction manager at risk or propose Carnes County E M S facility. If construction manager at risk manager is selected, like have C M A R on board prior to receiving bid for E M S facility. The C M R allows the owner to interview and select a fee-based firm based upon qualifications and experience. The C M A R and the design team work together to develop and estimate and estimate the design, a guaranteed maximum price provided by the C M A R. Who received proposals from awards, subcontractors to subcontractors. I remember we had that presentation sent back about this. The construction, the final construction price is the sum of C M R fee overrated and contingencies plus the subcontractor's proposals. Any unused contingency at the end of the project versus the, Shelby?
We, as Judge said here, couple, I guess about a month ago, two months ago, the rain day, he just gave us a presentation on the C M R, the C M A R, in fact, method of bidding the project out. I think that's, that's a way to go, probably get the best money for our dollar. Unless you're up to in the construction field, there's a different and better way. But I feel that we can have somebody representing our, our interests and then we can, they'll be able to negotiate any type of changes in the construction and as well as get the best bang for the buck on different partnerships.
Who would the C M A R be?
We would have to advertise for that person and, and it would be our representative for the project. Is that correct, Ms. Taylor?
Yes, sir. The, the attorney, Mr. Chapman, can help with writing the R F Q for you to advertise. And that way you'll be doing everything in accordance with what this Texas statute says in receiving qualifications. And then you'll be able to select based on qualifications and, and the fee that they propose.
Discuss.
There's no set fee from them? Or there's a set fee or is that going to?
Yes, sir. That will be part of.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand.
The set, the fee, they, when they respond, the attorney will help you write up what they have to respond with. My understanding is they'll have to give you qualifications. They'll have to give you a proposed fee that they'll be charging you for this, as well as their expected general conditions of what they'll be charging per day, per week, per month, however you structure the R F P. So, you will be able to evaluate them based not only their qualifications, but with the, the fee that they'll be charging you. And, and essentially, because of the way it'll be structured, their fee pretty much takes the place of the, the general contractor fee. Because you're going to pay for someone to manage your job, you're just going to either pay the G C or the construction manager. And then I presented the advantages of the construction manager at risk when I did that presentation and what you get for that.
Is this considered a contractual service or a, not require us to take a low bid or anything like that?
It has to go through.
I know it has to go through that process. Are we then able to accept a bid other than the low bid? So, we just like qualifications?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Motion?
Advertise for construction manager at risk to build the E M S facility?
On second. All in favor? Karen, next. Discuss, approve, disapprove joint election agreement between Pettis I S D and Carnes County to administer form duties related to Pettis I S D general and facial elections on November fourth, two thousand and fourteen.
Just like the earlier contracts that we signed earlier in the year when we were doing some joint elections, Pettis I S D has asked us to join with them and do their part of the election for this side of, this side that's on our county. So, it really only affects a, a member of people in precinct nine, voting precinct nine. And I've already printed up the ballots and everything. And our attorney has reviewed the elections agreement and approved it. So, I just need.
Are they paying us something for this?
Yes, yes, always. Anytime we do a joint election agreement, they're paying us for our services. That's the recent percent.
Do they base the discoverer cost or do we actually make a?
We actually make a little bit of money at ten percent admin. But just so you know that as a elections administrator, when, when your county has an elections administrator, I cannot not contract. So, if they ask me to contract, the law says that I have to contract. Just so you know.
I'll make the motion to approve item number eighteen as presented.
On second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is this the same formula that we did for?
Yes, it's, it's a little different. We tweaked it some, but it is basically the
Thank you.
That's good.
All right. Number nineteen. Discuss, approve, disapprove, correcting the error of the salary budget disposition of chief deputy court clerk. Mathematical traffic error was to be known under court prepared by Seeking H R. One?
I gave you Eric that information, including us package.
Steve, sir?
We, sir, that she had, that cop Mason.
But she's almost finished, I assume.
It's in your door?
Yes.
What is it?
It starts off with a summary page such as this. Just so that the constituents that are here understand what's going on, I'll read the information that I've provided to y'all. This is regarding the budgeted salaries for the chief deputy court clerks. That's the county clerks deputy, chief deputy, the district clerks chief deputy, and justice of the peace chief deputy for precinct three. Carnes County enlisted the services of Seeking H R for the completion of a salary survey for all positions within the county, officials and employees. After compiling and assessing job requirement information for each position and surveying no less than seven surrounding counties and three commercial employees, employers, Seeking H R provided suggested min, mid, and max pay scales by position. The recommendation was to get all positions to the minimum level with a select few to midpoint with the application of the fifteen percent rule. No one single increase, excuse me, single increase should be more than fifteen percent at any given time. In other words, the county would elect an initial round of adjustments no greater than fifteen percent and include a second round of increases the following year. This recommendation was utilized in the preparation of the proposed budget. Following the public hearing on the proposed budget September twenty-second, Commissioners' Court directed all salaries to be moved to the midpoint recommendation. All employee positions were changed in the budget as adopted based on the tabulated reports of recommended salaries by position, title, provided by Seeking H R. Elected officials could not be changed. Elected officials could not be changed as the public notice of proposed increases to elected official salaries as required by local government code one fifty-two point oh one three had been published September tenth. And there was not ample time, ten days before the adoption of the budget, to republish any salary increases for elected officials before the scheduled meeting to adopt the budget. Unfortunately, Seeking HR had a mathematical typographical error on the tabulated reports and the budgeted salaries for the position of Chief Deputy Court Clerk for the county clerk, district clerk, and justice of the peace number three were erroneously represented. You, I also attached the copies of Seeking's report shook with arrows besides the positions where the salaries were mathematically, typographically reported. This amount was included, and when I say this amount, I'm talking about the erroneous amount and the annuals of thirty-five thousand, five hundred thirty-one dollars and twenty cents. The annual salary for these three positions should have been thirty-two thousand, five thirty-one, twenty, a difference of three thousand dollars. During fiscal year twenty-fourteen, the current salaries for the above referenced positions ranged from twenty-four thousand, twenty-four dollars to twenty-seven thousand. The budgeted positions salaries for twenty-fourteen range from twenty-four thousand, twenty-four dollars to twenty-seven thousand, three eighty-seven, thirty-six. If the errors on the tabulated reports provided by Seeking HR are corrected and the above referenced positions will receive increases ranging from five thousand, five hundred thirty-one dollars and twenty cents to eight thousand, five hundred seven dollars and twenty cents as opposed to an additional three thousand dollars per position. This is just a matter to correct the error on the tables presented by Seeking.
And Seeking is verified those were, they were there. Okay. The, the thing I think we've found has happened is that some of the deputy clerks actually now make more under this salary than their bosses do, which is not what we intended to do. We, I think what we've done is we want to get them to midpoint. We did make that policy decision here in the, uh, Commissioner's Court meeting on the budget. But somehow or another, we had the wrong number of Seeking on those positions and, uh, I think we're doing any change. There, there's still generous pay raises.
But Sean approved the budget on September twenty-sixth. It was approved. I know it's not recorded. Will you have to make an amendment to the budget?
That's exactly what we're proposing to do. Yep.
But there was also a second report, uh, an amendment to the salary survey that, that we didn't, we didn't see that one. We only saw the first one and it's
Yeah.
significantly less than the first one.
Yeah.
Why was there an amendment done by Seeking?
When Seeking presented the original numbers and they were reviewed, I talked to LeAnn King and we were discussing the different job descriptions that were there. And the job descriptions for the county court clerks, the district court clerks, and the JP court clerks are, are extremely similar. Technically, a district court clerk could go to work for the county court clerk with basically the same responsibilities. So she reviewed those job descriptions and she readdressed the pay rate to make all those court clerk positions equal.
But the, the district, the chief deputy, district clerk and the county, chief deputy county clerk are not the same as a court clerk. They're totally different with totally different responsibilities, which is what we, which is what I told LeAnn when she visited with me. They're not just court clerks. They're doing so many other things in the office besides court clerk, which is why in the first salary survey, they were a little bit higher because they argued it's not just court. There's, there's a dozen other responsibilities that go with it. And when, when I talked to LeAnn, she understood that. I told her that. So I don't, I don't know that the first survey was really wrong because she lowered their pay upon the amendment or the Seeking company lowered that pay. And I don't know that it should be lowered from the first survey. That's just my opinion.
They lowered it from what amounts or what amounts?
From, I didn't see the second survey yet. From the first survey was at, at the midpoint was at sixteen, nineteen, I think, per hour. And the second survey puts in at fifteen something.
When was the second survey done? I mean, when did you receive that? Mid-August? Well, I got a copy from Erica. That was an in copy that I got.
Yeah, none of us saw the second, second one. It downed.
That's what, that's right. No, it just affected the JP's county clerk and district clerk.
So this attached here, is that the correct copy?
That's the revised copy, yes.
So what did the, the second one look like that you're talking about?
She's talking about the first one. What you have is the revised one. The copies I attached for this one.
Let me, let me get this straight. There's three clerks, right? Okay, I mean, there's three clerks that we're discussing right now.
Chief deputy clerk.
Chief deputy clerks. I'm, I'm sorry. District, the, the county and then JP, right?
JP three.
JP three, I'm sorry. Now, now let me get this straight. I'm, I'm sorry, we're not gonna ask. There's a difference between them and I don't know exactly what their job duties are, but their job duties are different. They're not, they're not similar.
They're very different.
They're very different, yes.
For, for instance, in my office, we do more than just court. We do, I mean, we do county court, commissioner's court, probate court. Um, we have all of those courts. Plus they do other things too. They're also, we're also doing vital statistics registration. We're doing land document recording. We're doing all kinds of, they're not just specific to a court. The JP's office is specific to a court because that's what they do is court. Um, I can't speak for district clerk for her office, but I think they do more than just court, um, hearings. And so, so they're different. They're very different. They're still considered chief deputies for that office.
Okay, Denise, I'd like to hear from you. What, what is, please?
I have three deputies and Mary Ann's there and I'll be my chief deputy. Again, also in reference to what Ms. Perrell said, it's not, our clerks are not just, our deputies are not just court clerks. I mean, we deal with AG Court, um, CPS. Uh, we take payments also. Um, it's not just a court clerk. We also, um, you know, look at felony probation payments. We, uh, AG Court, CPS.
So it's not directed just to one court?
No, right.
A number of job duties?
Yes.
Where you deal with a lot of different things?
Yes.
And I think that was the reason why we were all interviewed by LeAnn King so we can tell them what our offices does. And I don't think she should have gone in and changed her opinion on what everybody does. What's the point of talking to us if you're not gonna use what we say anyways? We also have an issue that, um, and I don't know how to do this, but the district, I'm sorry, the JP three clerk has already been paid the first salary of the new budget year. So now you're gonna tell me you're gonna lower her salary?
You can't, no, you can't do that.
Can't take it back. No, you've been signed.
How many do you, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't. Buy a copy of it.
How many do you, say somebody's baby's not needed?
I haven't seen it. I'm, Erica, may I talk about her salary?
It's done. It's built up. Wait here.
Okay, the differences are on the-
We already wrote the check.
Ken, Ken.
Part of the problem too, sorry, was we never saw the final budget that you guys approved of that Friday. That's why part of my, um, office supply fee is on, is on the agenda to revise because I never saw it until after it was approved. I think of y'all, we had seen this beforehand.
That's, that's, I don't understand. Come up and just make it.
I know, but we had seen all the salaries that might have been caught beforehand and questioned.
All right, I don't, do I have a motion to do anything with this? Because we don't act.
Well, honestly, let me explain when I, when I seen this on the agenda, and I just wanna explain the way I feel about it. When I seen this on the agenda originally, what, what I, when we signed that, when we approved everything, I thought we, on my part, that we had approved it for thirty-two thousand, not the thirty-five thousand, because that's what I originally signed. That was for all the clerks. Now they just came back to us and it was at thirty-five thousand. And usually to go through a whole budget, it'll take too long and we were already there to sign it. Three days prior to that is when we were going, we were agreeing with everything that was gonna be done to sign it. And usually when it comes to us to sign, it's already all printed in black and white. We, you know, we glanced through it, we do it, but to go through every number again takes too long and we had it. That was, it was put into a regular commissioner's court meeting, the, to agree with that. It wasn't a special meeting or anything, so we had to go through it. I apologize that I, I did, personally didn't catch that. But I originally, I thought it was thirty-two thousand. But right now because of what we're talking about now, about the differences in clerks, I can't vote to bring it down right now because some may have thirty, some may deserve thirty-five, maybe all of them deserve a thirty-five. Some may deserve thirty-two. I'm not really sure. So I apologize and I'm not making a motion on it right now, but with the information now that I got from the clerks, district and county clerk, I can't make that decision right now.
Well, I agree with Mr. Schindler. I mean, the week, this is what we said and the budget was submitted and turned in. I mean, that's what we decided on at the time. I, I just can't understand why Carnes County, we've done, we've done two salary surveys in a row, two years in a row. I can't understand why we can never get it right.
Exactly. Cause they're right, we're at fifty-seven thousand dollars, taxpayer dollars, per year.
All, all we're doing, all we're doing with this, with this survey right now, you're showing disparity. You're showing people, uh, employees are getting their feathers ruffled. I'm sorry if somebody is making, if somebody that's a supervisor is making less than, than, than somebody, we'll just have to correct it to the next year, next budget year or some other, but I don't know how. But, but it's just, it's, it's, I just can't understand it. I mean, it's, it's like we're supposed to get our act together. I was hoping the salary survey would bring our employees to a point of unity to wanna work with the team, with all the departments. But I swear, I, I think you give somebody a thousand dollar, two hundred thousand dollar raise and, and somebody would say, well, he got one dollar more than I got. I'm, I'm just tired of it. We need to get this right and leave it at that. And, and with that, I'm gonna say we do, do technical action.
All right. Here's the problem. I've got, uh, two potential successors to this job sitting here. And I've talked to both of them and told them that this budget process needs to start as soon as, as the election takes place, my successor is chosen and I can let them be sworn in and get, get out of the way. And when I got here in late March of this year, I started checking around to see what budget materials were available for me to examine for this, for this year's budget. There were none. There were, there was no budget materials. And I had to work, uh, with, why not, to gather up the material. I had to go to some seminars, get information on what you need to do to put together the budget to do that. Uh, I'm gonna leave behind a great deal more budget material for my successor, I hope. And will volunteer all the help that they need to understand what's been going on. And I think they both know pretty well how it's worked in the past. But the budget process needs, it needs to be started immediately at the beginning of the new year. So we don't have what we had, which was a tremendous time process where the final document, I don't get to sit myself till about five minutes before we started the meeting. And, uh, that's not anybody's fault except the process just didn't start near soon enough. It's a, when you're talking about a little three or four million dollar budget way back when and there, you know, there wasn't much change from year to year, that, that wasn't that difficult. This is a different animal and, uh, the objective of the salary survey was simply to give us some sort of standard that we could go by, uh, based on what other counties are doing, you know, that are similarly situated as. It is not perfect and it needs adjustment. Uh, but one thing I didn't wanna do was to have, uh, get it done and then have everybody come in there and say, well, my department needs more. I mean, I know everybody feels that way. But we wanted to put a standard in place. We got that basically done and adjustments that need to be made in the future will be for future county commissioners' courts. And, uh, we've done the best we can to put it in place now. And, uh, we was leave it to go for the year. Uh, I think there would be adjustments that may need, that need to be made in all kinds of positions for the following year, including elected officials. Uh, we wanna make the positions attractive enough and sustainable enough that people with qualifications, good qualified people could consider running for those offices. But I'm not gonna be here to handle that, but like I said, my two potential successors are both there today. They're well aware of these issues and I hope they can be moved forward much faster in the future and we can have those discussions and budget workshops and everything that we need to have here. And it just hasn't ever happened. But I appreciate your thoughts on that.
Judge, can we just skip that number twenty and go to twenty-one?
Let's go, this one, this award bids.
That twenty is already been done in the last meeting.
Right.
I just made, made a little down there. That number twenty-one is the one we can.
All right, twenty-one.
Can we just go ahead and award the bids and get to the seventh?
Where are the bids?
Bids for the, for the rows that anyone has to look at while going. There's seven bids.
Oh, Mike, get them. Yeah, it's probably in that picture.
All right, what we did was we reviewed all the bids. Everything was in order. All paperwork was in order for everybody. And, uh, what we did, I'm gonna read the name of the companies and the dollar amount and who's gonna be awarded. Black Toppers, their bid was five ninety-nine, five ninety-six, fifty-seven. FW Plo is seven twenty-nine, nine fifty-six, oh five. Brandon Paving is seven fifty-seven, double oh five, ninety-one. Clark Construction is nine eighty-two, one fifty-eight, four forty-nine. And then J.C. Carroll is nine oh three, eight fifty-four, oh two. And what we're doing is we're looking at awarding the bid to Black Toppers for the amount of five ninety-nine, five ninety-six, fifty-seven.
Okay. Any discussion?
No.
All, and then all the, all the, uh,
All paperwork's in order.
criteria?
We got some good bids, great pricing from the low bidder.
Starting dates?
Uh, they, they're saying within ten calendar days they can finish. We have to get the contracts together first. So about ten days to two weeks to get the contracts ready.
Okay.
Just, just to, for the paper that we have right now.
Yes, 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 sir. And he's, he's got a, a couple of patches to do in advance of then getting to it.
Need a motion on that?
Yes.
I'll make the motion to approve item number seven with Black Topper, uh, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars, five hundred and fifty-six.
Five ninety-six.
Five ninety-six. My apologies.
Five ninety-nine, five ninety-six, fifty-seven.
Yes, that's correct. I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Sean.
Thanks, Sean.
Good work, honey. All right. Let's see. Twenty-one, zip, was this Chris?
Yes.
Discuss, approve, disapprove. I guess a consultation presented to Commissioner's Court for a complete full audit of all Carnes County funds and monies. And it's also about Tracy Schindler, Charlene Darrell-Walsh.
Y'all have anything, y'all like that?
Well, we presented our petition and our-
Oh, I just need to make a motion to approve item twenty-one's bid.
The, uh, when this was brought before, on board the Commissioner's Court, Mr. and Mrs. Walsh, do the investigation of forensic documents is already underway and it is. It is not completed. And I won't know, I, I'm not particularly sure how long it'll take to get that completed. I have looked in local government code to determine what kind of authority there is for petitions to force a full audit. I have found one, but it- I have found one, but it requires that petition be filed with the district court, the district court rather than the county court. If there is another, if I'm missing something, I would have to look at that, but I don't know that I have authority to receive that petition, and nor has it been certified that, well, since, I mean, the signatures are all correct and everything, I don't want to frustrate you guys, because there's not ongoing, and I can't disclose to you what the full scope of the audit is or everything that's going on, but it, there is a forensic audit being prepared, trying to determine what, if anything, is happening with our county finances that shouldn't be. The scope of that audit, who's performing it, I am not allowed to say. And it's, it's not in my control, it's not in the control of the auditor or the treasurer or anybody else. And so I, all I can ask is your patience, what's been done. I know your frustration, Mr. Washley, for plugging in whatever you wrote in the paper where you questioned what I'm hiding, I'm not hiding any.
Well, my question is, Judge Butler, we talked to Herb Hancock, he tells us that he's going to give a report at the September twenty-sixth meeting on the forensic audit, nothing was ever given.
Mr. Hancock didn't have any control over that.
Well, when I called your office about it, I was referred to talk to Mr. Hancock, that your office was not in charge of it, so actually I talked to him.
That, and that's fine, but I'm not, neither one of us is in charge of it.
Well, she's here on her own.
So who is?
I think it works out.
I cannot tell you. I'm not going to do anything that's going to interfere with the, with an investigation that's ongoing by law enforcement agency, I'm not gonna give any other information out from that, okay?
But Judge, a forensic audit looks for fraud. That's basic principle in a forensic audit.
They're looking broad enough for regularities, but that would include fraud of them, Ms.
In, in section one-one-five-point-oh-three-one, it says an audit by an accountant, and it says commissioners' court can authorize it. When it shows negligence in the bookkeeping and accounts, you can ask for this full complete audit. And believe me, there is negligence, because the reports are not balancing. I don't know what the, what the rightful way of not voiding this full audit. These books have been out of balance for many years, and it's time that we, as taxpayers, have an accountant of our money, of our tax money, proper accounting of our tax money. We're getting big millions of dollars into this county.
You're absolutely right about that. And we are in the process of having a forensic audit prepared. I'm not sure what the full audit, the scope of the full audit, what duration, how many years back do we go?
You go back one year, if they don't find anything, you go back another year. You just continue to go back until they find what, where the problem is. I mean.
Could be back to your turn.
Well, I don't know, if you get CPA'd in here, you get three or four or five CPA's, surely they ought to be able to show you that, that's what they do.
I'd say if you go back five years, you'd probably find.
My experience with spending money on auditors in the recent past has been that just in order to clear up the last few months of two thousand thirteen's finances, cost us something between forty and fifty thousand dollars. What you're talking about could cost us a million dollars. I would, I would ask for your indulgence to see if we can get to the bottom of this, or at least find out what we do need to do with this forensic audit being prepared. If, you know, the results of that audit are likely gonna come in during the tenure in office of either one of these two gentlemen who's sitting in here as county judge. And they will have to look at it and determine where they go from there. I don't have any dog in the fight, I'm not gonna be here much longer. I just don't, I don't want to interrupt an investigation that's ongoing right now and put in some third party in there, another set of auditors, and they're in the middle of this investigation. I'm afraid it might compromise the investigation.
Well, in the spot audit, two hundred and thirty-five thousand was found, what if they do a full audit, what will they find?
Well, I don't know, we're, we're hoping, that's kind of flippant treatment of them, Ms. Washley, I don't know what they're gonna find. I mean, you know, and neither do you. We're hoping that we can, you know, my hope is if we find that it's just due to some irregularities or poor bookkeeping, something like that, there's no money missing, there's nothing like that in place. I hope that's what happens. But if it's not, then we'll get to the bottom of it. If there's a, any kind of mispreparation or fraud, whoever that is, that person will be prosecuted.
Well, let me ask you this, are the, this forensic audit, is it gonna bring the books into balance?
The, the purpose of the forensic audit is, is known to the agency that is having it performed. You keep asking me all these questions about it, what it's gonna do, who's involved, what period of time, I don't know. All I do know is that it's ongoing, that I'm not gonna interfere with. And I suspect that it will go back as far as it has to go back to determine if there's a unit that can't be counted for, where it went, who was responsible for it. That's what I understand is gonna happen.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna second face the motion, I want to go on record that I'm in favor of an audit. And I'll make some comments. Mrs. Herb has given me some information, Judge Butler has given me some information about what's going on, but I really don't know what's going on. I don't know who's investigating, but they tell me someone is, and I have to believe them, I have to give them a chance to do it. But anyway, I want to go on record that I second that motion. Now, I will comment on this. I do know that several months back, October, November, December, we had different figures from the treasurer and the auditor. I don't know who was wrong, but they were both wrong, because one of them had sixty-four million dollars, one of them had fifty-two million dollars, and I got a call that, hey, my books are wrong, whatever. Two months, we didn't have a report the next month, the following month we had thirty-eight million dollars. We didn't spend fourteen million dollars or twenty-six million dollars, so both of them made mistakes. So nobody's perfect, they all make mistakes. And we need to find out what's going on, we do need to have an audit. And I trust that, that it is ongoing, but I am second in grace of that.
And so this full audit, if it's being requested, there are several things we have to do. We would have to, number one, select an auditing firm. Number two, we have to give them a written directive telling them what the audit is consistent, how far back they go. We'll have to sign a contract with an auditing firm agreeing to pay their fees, and, and then we'll have to have some consultations with them to determine, you know, they're gonna wanna talk to us and say, well, here's what we think you ought to look at, here's how it ought to be done, and give us a, an estimated scope and an estimated cost of the audit effort. I would suggest that we get some names of some audit firms. I can get some names of some that do audits on public entities, like a county, and see if we can find somebody that would fill the bill and ask them to give us proposals, and come here and present to the commissioners' court their proposals, and see, I think you better see what it is they tell you before you decide that's what we wanna do. And then when they come in and tell you how much it's gonna cost, tell you what the scope of it's coming in, how long it will take them to complete that audit, then we go from there. So if you want to, if you want, if the commissioners want to do this, I recommend what we do is just that, make the motion that we locate some firms that do these audits, get, get them to send representatives here for the next commissioners' court meeting, and tell us what it is that they do, how they would do it, how long it would take, and what it would cost, things like that, that, you know, it'd be like me saying, I wanna build a bridge, you know, somewhere, and I don't, and I make a motion, we approved in it without knowing how much it's gonna cost or what the scope of the work will be. You can be there and you can ask some questions too. All the people here in the audit can ask those auditors those questions. And in the meantime, I'll see if I can find out anything about the status of the forensic audit that's going on right now. I don't know that I can, I'm, it may not be something I can even find out. But I have tried to stay out of it, I don't wanna influence what they're doing or anything else, but I could try to find out some of my, yes, sir?
Judge, I might just make a recommendation, I think we need to have a full audit, but I do not believe that we should interfere with the ongoing investigation. I think I need, I don't think that a full audit should even be started until this investigation is complete, reports been given, to make public.
Yeah, but we could still, like Judge Butler is saying, we could.
We're just moving down the road, going for, seeing, all right, here's the same that came up, here's how much it costs, here's how long it'll take, here's what their scope of work will be, 'cause they'll probably ask questions, well, do you want us to look at this, do you want us to look at that? You know, and we'll be able to, with input from everybody, kinda give them a scope of work.
'Cause you know, in January, we'll have to, we start the, you have to audit the past year, correct?
Actually, we hope to start that latter part of November, first part of December this year.
Well, that's, okay.
Yeah, well, the normal annual audit is, should be completed and reported to us by March, March, and that was what we hope to do this year. So we will, hopefully we'll get a head start on that and have that ready, that, that's the normal annual audit, be done by that time. The full audit that you're requiring, which I understand from your past statements, you want every JP's office, everybody that collects money for the county, you want their books audited to know that they are not losing money or whatever.
In other words, you wanna audit the auditor, right? Is that what you're saying? To audit and reconfirm their books?
They want to audit everything.
Everything. Go back one year, audit it, see what, if they, what they find. They can tell you in one year where the problem is, probably.
Could, could the spot audit and a full audit, Corrigan County, you know, that big one in the south?
They're not one in the south, yeah, spot audits, you know, the annual audit, they got select things to look at, but, you know, you're familiar, they don't.
Well, they select a test month. They don't just spot audit individual transactions, they select a test month, and they audit the receipts for that month, they audit the collections for that month, they audit the bank statements, the payroll reports, they audit everything for a particular month, not a JP receipt in November and a county clerk receipt in May and things like that, they pick a test month.
One or more?
Normally it's one. If they find irregularities within that one, then they'll expand it to additional months.
They need to do that when, there's, they would, we would have to give them a beginning check number in, like, the general account and the ending, and then they would randomly put into their computer, pick out maybe twenty for that year, the general account, then we would have to do the county treasurer's account. They wouldn't do this one month, they would do it throughout the year at random.
I, I think what I'd recommend we do is, where I just talked about, let's get some proposals, people, and try to get them here as soon as possible to discuss with commissioners' court on what their services would be, how they feel about it, and then commissioners' court will select the auditor. And, well, they'll select the auditor and determine whether or not it's work law thing to do at that point in time. And then I think the, the next thing is for our spot audit work the following year, we ought to also look at what firms available to do that, and have the commissioners' court select that audit firm. And it may be the same one that's this year, it may be a different one. But that'll be up to the commissioners' court to make that determination. Now, so I, yes, sir?
The forensic audit's been going on a couple months? Surely they are.
So?
Three months, four months.
They are gonna come up something pretty quick.
I don't know, I don't know how fast audits can work, I know how long it took our auditor to finish the spot audit, this should do the much discussed problems about that, but I don't know, you know, forensic audit is, it's detective work, so, you know, using the numbers and you'll see irregularities here, and you have to track it back and see, see what happened, see why it happened, see if you can figure out the reason. And I'm not sure how long that takes, to be honest with you, it probably depends on just how, how easily followed the financial worker job, that may not be. So, any time limit I would tell you about or give you regarding a forensic audit being performed by somebody I didn't even direct or employ would be difficult.
Now, are they into your office, county treasurer? Or have they asked questions, the forensic audit?
I haven't, I haven't had nobody in my office, other than the outside auditors.
So who are they dealing with?
Well, they may be examining records at this point in time.
Well, wouldn't they have to get the records from?
Nobody's in my office, all I got is.
I just don't understand.
I, I don't understand exactly what's going on with it either, I know it is taking place, I know who's directing it, that's all, that's all I can say. Right. So as I understand it, we will, and anyone on the commissioners' court knows names of respective auditors, just let me know, we'll notify them, I'll have Erica send them out letters, giving them basics of where I know that it's being requested, and we'll see if we can get some people who are interested in providing a service and they can go up there and tell us what they do, how much they charge, everything else, okay? Does that satisfy for everybody? What's that?
You gotta vote, yeah, votes in the front.
Well, no, we're not gonna vote to do it until we get, we get the.
Got a person to say.
Okay, what, what is your motion?
My motion, please, number twenty-one. And, Mr. Pete, say it. What?
Do we?
Are you in favor of letting?
In other words, this is a motion to proceed with a full audit, so at this time, if we approve this motion, then we solicit auditors.
I think, well, I'm in favor.
It says, discuss, approve, disapprove the petition presented to the commissioners' court for a full and complete audit. Have we, have we verified that the petition signatures are all valid and everything?
No, no.
Judge, did the, the petition did not require any particular amount of signature.
Now, if we have to go the other route, who goes through the district judges, it requires thirty percent of the last governor's rate, which we will get about thousand signatures, which we can get.
See, I don't think you even need to do that, because the county, as I understand that, what I'm hearing from the commissioners' court, is they are inclined to go ahead and hire an auditor to do a full audit, petition or no petition. And they, they. And they, they're inclined to do that. And what we're saying is, let's get the auditor, potential auditors, come in here and tell us pricing, all that kind of stuff. And then we either vote to hire them or we vote not to. I don't think the petition will be necessary. Because, you know, any kind of petition, if we accept it and approve, we have to verify. Yeah, I understand. But my motion is going to be, instead of number 21, well, we got a person to say. I would propose as an alternative that we do what I said. That we solicit people, good auditing firms that do work on public entities, come in here and give us a scope of work, pricing, ask any questions they have. And then at that point in time, the Commissioners' Court can hire them up right then and there or not. Put that on the agenda. Is that...
You okay with that? Well, we'd like to see them vote to do it, obviously, if, if everything works out.
Well, I'd like to see what they say before we vote to, to do it. But I don't, I want to know, I want everybody to know what the cost will be and what they think they can accomplish and how they go about doing it. That's...
I feel like if we can spend fifty-seven thousand dollars on salary survey, we sure can spend money to have a full audit.
But it might be a whole lot more money. It might be...
If it is, if you...
I know when you first came to my office, you told me you thought it would be two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
I said, I thought between a hundred and a hundred fifty thousand, top, tops, sleep. From fifty to a hundred fifty, you were saying?
My reflection was something different, but...
No, I said fifty to a hundred fifty in open court.
Okay, but I mean, when you first came to my office. That's right. Look, it's a lot of money. I don't mind spending it. If this, if we determine the county's needs, had it a full audit, there's some support for that, that's fine. Let's get the auditors come in here next time and tell us what they'll charge, what they'll do, ask any questions they have. And then we can vote at that point in time to have the audit, to hire them right then and there and have it done. That's the way I propose it. I think we're kind of flying blind until we have an auditor come in here and tell us what they're doing, what they could be.
Well, we still need to vote on this, so...
Well, this is about approving the petition. We haven't seen any verification of it. I don't want to approve petitions.
How do you verify a petition?
You'd have to have someone, I think...
In my office, I would have to make sure they're all registered voters and I believe that signatures match with what, you know, with our record. I believe that's correct. I remember what I read. It's been a while since I read it.
But, but I don't think we need to, myself. If the Commissioners' Court, I'm hearing some support here.
Well, I mean, I mean, the petition has been filed with the district judge who, who had the jurisdiction in the county and that there shall be a special audit of all county record. On the receipt of the petition, district judge shall determine its validity. The judge determines that the petition meets the requirements of subsection A. The judge shall immediately employ a person and prepare a special audit of all county record. Special auditor must have qualifications required by the law of county. And a special auditor is entitled to receive compensation for services originally fixed by the district judge.
I'm reading section 115.031. If considered by the Commissioners' Court of the county to be justified by an imperative public necessity, the court may employ a disinterested, competent and expert public accountant to audit all or part of the books, records or accounts of the county and it names the reasons of official misconduct, intentional omission or negligence in report or records. And I think every month your reports reflect a negligence.
It also says the county court will also publish a resolution.
Pardon?
It also says the county court shall publish a resolution.
All right, that's interesting.
I don't read that.
Number F.
What we're doing, one is what the county can do without a petition. We don't need a petition to do that. If we want to have a full and complete audit, the county government, which is sitting right here, can do that. If we don't do it, and there are thirty, you can get this petition filed with the district court, it shall be done. I would suggest that we wait and have a, the auditors come in here and tell us what they can do, how much it's going to cost, and then vote to do it or not. Now, if you want to go ahead, if the Commissioners want to go ahead and vote and have it stated that we're going to do it and then go get the auditors coming in, tell them how much it's going to cost and all that stuff, you can do it that way too. But I don't think any action needs to be done with the petition because the petition doesn't have any effect. And we haven't verified it.
I'll have to agree with that because we can't take action on 21th of the court. We're going to verify the petition. So I'll have to agree with that. But I do still...
I think at the next meeting, I'd be placed on the agenda that we go ahead and request proposals for a special audit.
You want to go with that?
We can handle that.
Okay, it was already made and seconded in court. You want to go ahead and see if there's another one to let it die? You can't just take it.
I'll move that we take no action on 21th at this point in time. And as an alternative, we...
We have to resend that motion. We have a motion for...
That's why I said you need to go with, you need to go ahead and ask for another. It's already made and seconded, then just let it die.
If you don't have a, if you don't have a vote, it dies at its own weight.
We'll make another motion.
But we did have a vote and seconded. Yeah, first Tracy, Tracy made it and he seconded. That's why I was trying to say, we're going to let it die, but it needs to get voted on.
All right. All in favor? opposed? I don't know. So it's two to two?
I would have done.
I would have done.
Yeah, because we agreed that we were going to wait on it, so...
Okay, okay. So it doesn't appear. Uh, now, in the meantime, gentlemen, I will get the names and you submit me names if you want to, of accounting firms that do audits of public entities. And we'll try to get them up here for the next Commissioners' Court meeting, tell us what they can do and how much. And answer any questions anybody has about proceeding with an audit. Okay?
So is it necessary that we go the other right route to get the petition for the district judge?
Why don't see what we do next week? It may, it may not be.
Mrs. Blasky, I would say...
The vote that you all just did, how many voted yes and how many voted no? I heard two different times.
Three noes, two yeses.
Yes, yes, and yes?
No, 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 yes and yes.
Okay, but that was just for the petition.
Yes.
That's not... All you need to do is vote, make a motion, just to say, okay, let's hire, I mean, let's get a, an accounting up here and discuss it and present, make a presentation to the court.
Probably more than one. I'll have Erica put that on the next agenda and I'll try to get some people to come.
Mrs. Blasky, I would probably go with Karen and get the petition all set up so if you need it, you know, get it certified, make sure that it's...
You don't need it. If our county commissioners that were elected in see that there's a problem, then they need to, they need to authorize an audit.
Exactly.
But let's get somebody here to make the presentation of what, you know, of what they're going to be dealing with.
That's right, sir.
But, I mean, as county commissioners, y'all are elected in by the people. If you see there's a problem, then y'all should be the ones automatically say, "We need to get this audit done." It's protection of our county and our funds.
We are, we are currently doing a couple of things, trying to get that done. We have not yet ordered a full audit. But apparently that is going to happen. So we will be meeting next Commissioners' Court with people who can tell us would be involved, how much it would cost and all that. And we'll go from there. That's the agenda and I'll put, discuss...
Or we need to have a special meeting next week, one day, put on the agenda prior to that, just have one thing on the agenda and get it done.
Depends on how quickly we can get an auditing firm to send representatives in here. And I mean, I don't mean really one. I'd like to get two or three, as we have choices. I don't want to have just a hand selected one. People think I picked them or something like that. I'm going to check with two, three attorneys that work a lot with public entities and I ask them who they would recommend. I've already got a couple of them. I'll see what I can get. All right? Twenty-two.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
Discuss, approve, disapprove, hiring an assistant for the Orange County Treasurer's Office at a salary of thirty-one, three twenty-four eighty. This be a full-time position to assist treasurer performing the office's core duties. And I offered this after our budget, our budget does include a contingency fund in the event we need to hire additional people or get pay raises or anything like that. And in view of the time it's going to take to get all the other stuff set up that's approved in our budget, the financial officer, personnel director, things like that, I've determined that our treasurer's office needs an assistant now. And I checked with Ms. Malone. She told me that she thought at this salary, she could attract a candidate that would be able to perform the duties adequately for her and assist her in doing her job. There's still a lot to be done. Also that then she asked that we amend her treasurer's office supply budget from seven fifty to two thousand dollars. I think this once again could be a line item amendment. Both these things, twenty-two and twenty-three, a line item amendment that don't require the showing of an emergency. And I'd move that we approve doing both those things. And one thing I would like to do is to have the interview conducted with Ms. Malone and a representative of the Commissioners' Court. Any commissioner or me, anybody, probably not me because I'm not long for the court. But I think some representative, one of the commissioners ought to also participate in interviews of any candidates.
I'd like to have the definition of core duties, office core duties, just for clarification.
They're defined by statute.
May I add, why would it...
Assistant, of the assist, the, the office assistant for core duties. I mean, I know that the treasurer has statutory duties, but the assistant would do what? I mean, actually...
Assist her with those core duties.
Right, and what we do is...
I'll make a clarification.
What we do is when there's two people in the office, one, one of them receives the money in and the second person makes the deposit, it's a check and balance spending. So basically, you have me receiving the money and depositing the money and doing all the other...
May I add, one of this was taken out of the budget to begin with?
Because we thought we would have in place the new financial officer and personnel director in time to relieve Ms. Malone of that much workload. And we had, it's going to take longer than that.
Thank you, I appreciate the suggestion.
And I want to freeze the treasurer's department along this thing.
Yeah, I agree if she needs help. In fact, she probably needs it too.
Can I second your motion, Judge?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And then, let's, that's number twenty-two, number twenty-three, amend the office supply budget. Ms. Malone was telling me that seven fifty will be inadequate. Raise it to two thousand. I move that we approve of that.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So you made a comment for some commissioner to assist by, is that...
Yes, uh, what? Who would it be? Volunteers?
Whoever she wants.
I don't know, she doesn't get to pick.
I'll, I'll do it.
Yeah, Shelby, she needs to liaise along with the human resources, so she'll be good.
Shelby's good, all right. Shelby to assist. Tank collectors report.
Report for September of two thousand fourteen on the county M and O. Current taxes for the month of September collected eight thousand, seven hundred sixty-three dollars and twenty-six cents. Year to date, nine million, six hundred sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents for a collection rate of ninety-eight point nine percent. Delinquent taxes collected for the county M and O. For the month of September, one thousand, seven hundred twelve dollars and seventy-three cents. Year to date, sixty-one thousand, seven hundred eighty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents for a collection rate of thirty-one point seven one percent. The county INS for the month of September, one thousand, one hundred fifteen dollars and three cents. Year to date, current taxes collected, one million, two hundred ninety-four thousand, nine hundred thirty-two dollars and eighty-six cents for a collection rate of ninety-eight point ninety-one percent. Delinquent taxes, INS, month of September, one hundred and seven dollars and twenty-six cents. Year to date, two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-four cents for a collection rate of twenty-three point seven six percent. The County Road and Bridge for the month of September, current taxes collected, one thousand, nine hundred nineteen dollars and twenty-two cents. Year to date, two million, two hundred and seven thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents for a collection rate of ninety-eight point nine one percent. Delinquent taxes, Road and Bridge for September, three hundred sixteen dollars and sixty-six cents. Year to date, thirteen thousand, eight hundred dollars and seven cents for a collection rate of forty-one point seven percent. Rule of fire, month to date, current taxes, nine hundred forty-three dollars and ten cents. Year to date, one million, sixty-six thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-two cents for a collection rate of ninety-eight point nine percent. Delinquent taxes for the month of September, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety cents. Year to date, seven thousand, two ninety-three, seventy-six for a collection rate on delinquents of forty-three point two five percent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Malone, you said there you were going to present your treasurer's report later this month?
Yes, sir.
Name of the bill.
On page one, about two-thirds of the way down, you'll see an eighteen thousand dollar payment to Carne Soil and Water Conservation District. That is what was agreed upon as their legislative contribution for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen. They have eagerly accepted that donation and requested the money.
And everything that says this, why fourteen is...
It's from the previous fiscal year. It was purchased made or invoiced as done prior to September thirtieth. You go to page three, two-thirds of the way down is an expenditure to fire mechanical LTD, nineteen hundred, seventy dollars and twenty-five cents. That is for the inspection and assessment of the AC system here in this building. Hopefully, soon they'll be presenting a report as to the solutions.
It includes physical help, physical labor, cleaning units and working here at the home on Labor. It's not just, not just inspection and evaluation, it's physical labor.
So is that...
He's here working with the guys, showing them what to do and how to do it.
Okay, so that's not how to fix the cooling problems? That's just the regular maintenance?
Part of it, I think that mostly was... Part of it, I think that mostly was, was the thing is not to report.
You go to page ten under Road and Bridge. Just some highlighted expenditures on County Road two sixty-nine, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand seven hundred seventy-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents. Those expenditures were to C-MAX on County Road one sixty-five. Spent in this pay period is one hundred six thousand six hundred twenty dollars and thirty-nine cents. That's to C-MAX and Colorado Materials. And on County Road one twenty-two B, forty-four thousand three hundred dollars was expended to listed construction. On page twelve, we have a payment for Road and Bridge Special to Bancorp South Equipment Finance, a hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred seventy-three dollars. This is to actually purchase the soil compactor, isn't that what it's called? That the court approved within the last budget year. And Bancorp had set it up as a finance agreement, but when Mike submitted his budget, he opted to pay for it a hundred percent out of Road and Bridge Special. And back on page three, midway down under capital outlay, you'll notice we have a payment to Hale Mills Construction Company on the jail progress, seven hundred and ninety-two thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars and sixty-five cents. Total of this bill cycle is one million four hundred thirty-five thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars and ninety-one cents.
Are y'all on the view, asking Judge?
We, as in the financial side, know they are still in the conversion. They are supposed to be here the seventh week in November to simulate a payroll from the prior period. And then the next week we will do a true payroll. And then they will do the general letter and APCA's the first week after Thanksgiving, I believe.
They told us by mid-December we would not be doing side-by-side, we would be live with the new system.
I'm moving, we'll try to pick.
I'll second it.
On, Beth? Okay, report of fees, funds, money collection by the following departments, county clerk?
For the month of September, we collected forty-eight thousand twenty-three dollars.
District clerk?
We collected a grand total of four hundred and twenty-two thousand one hundred seventy-six dollars and sixty-three cents. Less checks dispersed, four thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars and twenty-two cents. Less cash bonds of four hundred and two thousand four hundred and fifty-eight forty. Total for the month, fourteen thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars and one cent. We also had two direct deposits into the district clerk's account. Twenty general fees for the month of July deposited in September, one for four hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty cents. The other attorney general fees for the month of August deposited in September also in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and three dollars and forty-four cents. Thank you.
Karen intern?
I have her report.
Okay.
I'm not sure what she...
Hot chips?
Okay, well, first, on September, to restitution, she collected three thousand one hundred eighty-four dollars and eighteen cents for costing fines, the court cost seven hundred ninety-one dollars. So total money collected by county attorney's office year to date, thirty-two thousand six hundred dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Justices of peace.
Somebody, does somebody not get a three and a four because I have two threes for four?
I have a missing couple.
Do you have a seat?
I don't think so. I have two ones. And I have one.
I don't have a two.
I don't have a two.
But I have an extra one. I've got three and four.
We don't have four.
I've got three.
She said four in the minute.
Yeah, one.
We've got one there.
We've got three and a got a one. No three, see?
I have no three, see two.
We got three and four.
You don't have a one either?
Just have three and four.
Just the ones. One, three and four.
Let me reverse this. Well, for one, it looks like total revenue collected is forty-seven thousand three thirty-two forty-five. Total retained by county is thirty-one thousand one seventy-eighty-one. Balance was remitted to the state. For JP three, the total collected was thirty-two thousand seven sixty-three ninety-five. Retained by the county is twenty-two thousand nine fifty-one oh seven. Remitted to the state is ninety-eight twelve eighty-eight. Number four, ten thousand, pardon me. Total revenue collected is fifteen thousand one thirty-four sixty-eight. Total retained by the county is ten thousand four thirty-two forty-nine. Forty-seven oh two nineteen remitted to the state. And we don't have a report from Judge, is that Judge?
Is that Judge? Hey, these here, three and four show the cover sheet to be for August two thousand and fourteen. However, JP one is September. So is the top sheet, is it the whole month?
JP one says September. Thank you. I'd like to check two, see what holdup is. Did you check my, see, juvenile apartment? Special project.
Okay, special project, I got that. We did thirty-four. Total money's taken in was twenty-six hundred seventy-five dollars. Engineer fees for the floodplain was sixteen hundred. And county portion was a thousand and seventy-five. Sheriff?
On the sheriff's office for September twenty-fourteen, I report call citation. Assaults, we have twenty-two. We had two burglaries, civil standby is three. Criminal mischief for ten. Criminal trespass for six, disturbances for seventeen. EMS calls were one thirty-five, fire eighteen, escort for fourteen. Loose livestock are thirty-one. Prisoner transports are eighty-one. Request speech option for one sixty-three. Road hazard for twenty-one, suspicious activity fifty-two. Suspicious subject slash vehicles forty-one. Dead thirteen. Warrant service for ten, welfare checks for twelve. Arrest one hundred and eight. Warnings for three forty-eight. Citations for three twenty-two. Traffic stop for eight oh seven, accidents for sixteen. Second page is the inmates in custody. And on the the total today that we have.
Sheriff, can I ask you a question? In the GEO, you have thirty beds out there, is that right? And can you house not only Orange County prisoners, but also anybody else that, you know, in the words of Wilson County, and whatever some other county, you can house their prisoners there and get paid for it?
It just all depends on the contract that they first made, how they worded, how is it?
You're talking about the contract of Orange County GEO? I'm kind assured on GEO's. I was told by GEO that we can actually house those other people. And it seemed like it might be a revenue stream for it.
Ryan, I have a question on what happened in Ascoosa County yesterday with taser. And I noticed today we, the constable three hesitated. Do we have the proper training in place for everybody?
We have a policy.
But are the constables aware of the policy?
I don't know if the constables are aware of the policy, that's their department, Shelby. But they should have a policy. If you're going to use a taser, you have that policy for everything. But you have to be trained every six months.
Well, I understand that, but just so, I want you to, we have a policy in place that how our officers will conduct themselves with that taser as well as, you know, getting somebody checked out right away so there's not complications or a harder issue with it.
Our, the sheriff's office policy says if someone is tased, that they are to call EMS immediately and get checked out before you get into our county jail. I don't know what the other departments have, but as far as the constable, I get checked with them.
Ascoosa County had one that was tased and died.
Ollia County had the same thing about three weeks ago.
So in other words, can you not tase them, you have to call someone before you can?
No, you can tase them, but the deal is if you tase them, you'd have to make sure that you give them medical care.
Then how would you know if they's going to die on you? I mean, you don't know if they have a heart problem.
It just makes sure that you, you know, some people they deal with all the time, but just to make sure that after they do tase them, they call somebody and have them checked out. Just a precautionary thing.
Make sure. EMS guy?
Okay, for the month of September. Hundred and thirty-four dispatch requests. Transported eighty-seven patients either to the hospital or to be evacuated by air transportation. We had thirty-six refusals, eight canceled calls. We had ten calls that required both units. Twenty-four calls weren't done by our backup unit at the time. We had eight air evacuations. Two out-of-county transports, both of which were as a result of road construction. Both were transported from Fall City to Conley because they had the road down to one lane. We actually had to get police escort through there for one of those. We did three fire, having that standby. Collections for the month, our Medicare total was seventeen thousand one hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty-five cents. Commercial, other insurance was eleven thousand one hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. That's a total of twenty-eight thousand three hundred twenty-seven dollars and forty cents. And year to date, total of collections, three oh eight, five fifty-three, fifty-four cents.
And you have the new unit?
The new unit is actually up and running. We put in in line and placed a unit nine sixteen who is having some maintenance, well, has had some, been having some maintenance issues, but the air conditioner went out in the front, so we went ahead and put it online. So it is up and running, it's operational, they're running calls in it. Not been running calls in it since Friday evening late.
You got the license?
Yeah, well, you transfer the license over when you put it in place of a truck, you transfer the license over. So that's, that's what we're doing. But yes, the deal was sent off for the license, it should be in, it might be in my mailbox right now.
Makes sense, what they did with the license, because it was in the middle of a, I guess, the billing cycle, they used their own money, they pointed up ninety bucks in cash and took it to the city, to the state to get that thing expedited. We still would be probably waiting on that.
Good, thank you. Alright, election department.
I don't have any fees and charges, but I did want to let everybody know that I got, I have processed now close to three hundred ballots by mail, so that's awesome. That's like a record and it's, it's awesome. That shows people are really paying attention and maybe are going to come out to vote this year. We got our judge's training done. Early voting does start next Monday, October twentieth. And it'll be Monday through Friday in our office from eight to five. And we're doing an extended evening on October the twenty-ninth, so we'll be open from eight till seven PM that evening.
Very good, thank you. Uh, report from Road and Bridge, Jerry Martin.
One of the big things I want to bring up is hopefully, if everything works right, November twelfth, we'll be opening bids for that, down in Road two seventy-seven. Got that crane filled in, hopefully we can get that resolved and get it back in operation. We were right now, we've got a contractor we're claiming out there on two oh six. We've got the line still laid down on top of that old asphalt, we're chewing it up. We're stabilizing it, hopefully everything will be done in a matter of time that we're planning on it. And our steel foot operation, we're hoping to get kicked off pretty quick to get all the roads. Other than that, we've just got the usual complaints about rough roads.
You do have engineers approval on two oh six, don't you?
Yes, Captain.
You do have engineers approval on where you're doing on two oh six?
Yes, sir.
Sure do. I had a resident from out there tell me, they got a good road, all they got to do is put that base on compact.
No, it'd be like putting bubble gum on baby powder.
Anyway, I drove it right through, but the engineer said, I can't do it.
Well, we have ABM construction and he's the one that's been building a lot of roads here. He's got it together.
Very good, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Report Margaret's office, are you going to give your report at the end of month as well? That's report on county personnel officer, here, Shelby? Commissioner precinct one, anything? Pardon me, an extension report, Pete?
Well, they're still working on air conditioning, they've made a lot of improvements. A lot of people say my air conditioning's better. For whatever report that they're going to need to put some more roof job teams on and take care of the hallway.
Okay.
We do have that, but it's not fine, we don't have anything.
You had any studies for the roof for the courthouse? You talked to the ring last year?
I did, they had to get, we had to get final report on the stabilization of the building. And then we've been... And then we've been waiting for the, uh, the final version of the contract to come in. I think I got an email on that yesterday and the day before, where we'll now have that. We'll have to look at it and see if they've made some modifications. He's gonna review that, see what comes out. And then, uh, there are several separate codes during the proof grant, I guess, or...
Are we also looking at, uh, drawing up plans for completion or better thing, or...
Yes, and we're gonna be probably talking to Mr. Fisher about that. And we, as you recall, Mr. Blain is unable to continue to do that kinda work, uh, and we're planning on using the only other person that really makes sense probably is Fisher. He has experience with the historical commission, wants to see in restoration. He's extremely familiar with the projects, he worked on it so long, doesn't make any sense to try to go out and reinvent the wheel. And he's got drawings that are fairly far along, so we'll be in touch with him shortly, and we'll, I'm probably trying to get on the next agenda to approve the way, contract going. All right, and we've already, and the budget we've already set aside enough money, thank you. Status and waste recycling, James, anything on that?
No, nothing.
Did you ever find your vacuum?
No, I'm still looking. I've kinda, uh, I was online the other day, and I looked at about maybe five or six of them.
Oh, hey, gentlemen, here's a status report, just came in from JP two. Looks like... Total of twenty-two thousand nine twenty-four ten. Retained by the county is twelve thousand nine nine three ninety-two, and remitted to the state is nine thousand nine hundred thirty dollars and eighteen cents. Tracy, anything on special permit status?
I've got, uh, permits on the water, uh, water lines and entrances, and what have you, more road board is sixty-two thousand one hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-six.
Now, before we adjourn, there's an issue on a petition to abandon portion of Gillette Yorktown Road. This is being presented by one of the members of my law firm, so I'm gonna recuse myself this time, and James, will you take over as the pro temp?
Sure.
All right, that's, and then after that?
We have some comments.
And then there's one more after that.
Pro comments.
Pro comments?
I have two, rather than X.
Okay. All right, I, I just read through the first.
Yeah. Two of them?
Yes, the second one is the Kennedy and Carnes City Road. I'm gonna do the Gillette in Yorktown right now.
Go ahead and, go ahead and do the Gillette in Yorktown Road.
Okay. The Gillette in Yorktown Road has not been used by Kennedy for over sixty years now. Notice was posted at the courthouse on August fifteenth, and then published in the Carnes County Line on August twenty-seventh, and then posted at two locations, on the Sandy of the road on August twenty-ninth. I've also got a statement from the adjoining landowners, where they have no objection to having the road declared Kennedy.
How many landowners is adjacent to that road?
There are two.
Two?
Yeah, those are my clients in this room.
No, this is yours.
Oh, well, yes, I take it back. I've got two too.
There's, there's one landowner on one side of the road, and then it's a trust that owns on the other side, and this is being presented by one of the trusts, the use of that trust. So I have a statement from one on the other side.
You know, I couldn't hear, what are you doing with that road? What are you doing?
Abandoning.
I'm just asking them to declare abandoned. It's not been used for more than sixty years now.
But abandoned, that means they don't have to take care of it anymore?
Correct.
I mean, it gets all, it gets all busy.
How long is that? Point zero seven one? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm trying to find a road.
It's, uh, there's a flat in the back. It runs along State Highway one nineteen, and it meets up with County Road two sixty-nine. If you look on the flat, it's the one at the bottom. It's right here.
It's not there, right?
It's not been used, actually, I believe there's a fence that's been put up that meets up with Donald Hawsey's tract on the other side, and so...
Yeah, I know where you're talking about.
I'm hoping they're, well, abandoned or...
Yeah, they've got, you have everything in order. Motion's been made, a second or all, favor say aye?
Aye.
And I get the original.
Any opposed, none, motion carries.
You have the original.
Does that road have a county number?
No, it doesn't.
No? I know where she's talking about now, we've never, we've never used it or anything. What do I need to sign?
Just on the order, um, you'll be signing in two places as the judge puts in.
The other one that Joe were talking about, there's not, not another one here, is there? One supplement?
Yeah, I have the supplement.
I only, I only have one.
When I didn't get it, when I posted it, since I tried to put the letter in, it's been taken out.
I got you, okay. This one right here is. Okay, so which one, which one am I gonna have to read? This one here? We've already passed the, we've already passed the supplement notice, I mean, I know this is, we've already passed this one here, right? This one here?
Yes, that's the one we just did, Gillette in Yorktown, and the next one is this one, the Kennedy.
I'm gonna go ahead and... I'm sorry, let me read this one. It's a petition to abandon the portion of Kennedy and Carnes City Road.
Yes, and I've got all the documents that are right here.
Okay. Okay, no problem.
But you want me to start off the next one?
Yeah, go ahead and start on the next.
And this one, the same name, hasn't been used, I'll give you all the originals, hasn't been used since State Highway one eighty-one was put in. And same thing, the notice was posted at the courthouse, May fifth, published in the County Line, May fourteenth, and then posted at two locations in the vicinity of the road for, um, since August twenty-sixth. And same thing, Mark Wagner's here, he represents the adjoining landowners, and I have a statement from them that they have no objection.
Like, this is so abandoned, nobody knows there.
Where is that road?
Yeah, this one runs, it's across the street from Red Dogs. Um, kinda runs parallel to Highway one eighty-one, but there's nothing really there, you can't tell where they do it.
Across from Red Dogs, in what area?
Yeah, in Kennedy, uh, I think it starts at County Road that, and then runs back that way and meets up with one eighty-one. I've got a, I don't know if the map attached there is...
That area right there, so, okay.
Now, the only thing on this one, the county did actually execute a pipeline agreement on this, on this road, um, but I've been working with Herb Pinkoff on it to make sure that if there, the two additional lines are putting it on this road, the county will receive all of the funds for it. And the language's been voted petition in the order to make sure that that happens.
Okay. Do I have a motion for this one?
That's okay.
A second?
Been made, a second or all, favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None, motion passes. Let me get them signed.
That it?
That's it?
Okay. We didn't have a formal systems comments, if anyone has anything at this point, we kinda, I guess I've done this a little differently, maybe in the past, until then, the commission report is to let people comment as issues come up. Seems to me to be more sensible than, you know, saying, all right, everybody has their speaks now, and then can't say anything later on. It's worked out fairly well, I think, that way. But if anyone does have any additional comments they'd like to make, uh, feel free to let us know and comment it now. Yes, sir?
Last meeting, y'all had that, the person from Select Energy on the, switching over that land?
Yes, sir.
Did y'all ever have the opportunity to look over the contract to see if they were...
I haven't, I haven't seen it. I need to see it, but it's never been sent to me. Everybody, has he ever sentenced anything? Another guy was very upset, didn't do it, and, uh, if he has, he quoted some language out there, said we couldn't under reason, we withhold our consent from something, I guess the amendment that he's talking about, but he's never sent anything.
Y'all don't have a contract that y'all got with him when they built the place for the tax annex?
Do we have that contract? Yeah, I'd like to look at it, because I know I come in as a guy, they can send me a reservation, I'll look at it, but I haven't seen anything yet.
Judge, contract is in the archive, I think Carol had told me about it. It was referenced in the document, said it was filed in her file, but I think the stuff with tax, with Judge Kendall, they moved out, that contract, original contract, probably that stuff, that Judge Kendall.
Across the street somewhere in archives?
Is that, does that sound about right?
I think we're talking about a different one. Yeah, we're talking about the abatement agreement.
Yeah, the abatement agreement.
Yeah, Lou and I were talking about the other one with GEO.
But the one with GEO is what I was talking about.
No, we're talking about a different one.
Okay.
They should have that at the place of district, I can ask just...
Could you, somebody find it for me, and then we'll have her look it over, I'll look at it, see whether or not, uh, we're within our rights to refuse, uh, the amendment of the abatement agreement. You know, they want us to continue abating the taxes, uh, and representing that they have complied up to this point with all the performance of the abatement. I don't know whether they have or they haven't. I think what he told us was all I gotta do is send you a letter saying we've complied, and you have to, you have to accept that, yes?
That is not true. The comptroller had one time had guidance out for abatements and tax abatements, and that guidance specifically stated that the county commissioners' court was required to audit each abatement pop that they had an effect in their county. Doesn't say how you have to do that, but the commissioners' court will appoint somebody to audit those abatements, and it does not say anything about self-auditing. I mean, that's like, you know, fox in the hen house.
Yeah, it seemed a little far out there in his, his approach to it, but, uh, let's get, got to the contract, look at it. I appreciate you reminding me of that, through the meetings like that, and heard us. We'll see, if, if it looks problematic and like we have to do something, we'll bring up, uh, the county commissioners' court.
That, that's been brought up, due to commissioners' court, Commissioner Dutey brought it up, and then a few months after he was elected, and...
About abatements?
About auditing these abatements. And, uh, he was basically told was mind his own business by a previous administration, and they did not want, and it's quite crazy, they did not want to start abating, but that's for a whole different reason. But legally, we are required to do that annually.
Legally, we're not required to, it seems like we might want to. If we're giving these people big tax breaks and under agreements that they were going to conduct their business in a certain way, certainly makes sense if we verify they're doing that. Okay?
I'm making moves until, oh, we got to brew the minute.
Oh, oh, oh.
We got a minute. I guess they're like the...
We're crying, anybody got any credit? Second, on favor.
I'll second, John.
On favor. All right, thank you very much, folks.